Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council. Mayor Skip Henderson. City manager Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Evelyn Turner-Pew, Mayor Pro Tem and District 4. Charmaine Crabbe, District 5. Gary Allen, District 6. Mimi Woodson, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. Judy Thomas, Post 9 at Large Counselor. John House, Post 10 at Large Counselor. Sandra Davis, Clerk of Council. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia, this is your city council.
Welcome to the March 12th Columbus City Council meeting. We're glad to see you guys here, especially our pledges. We'll call them up in a little bit. And we're gonna start this meeting as we start all of our, our public meetings, and that is by asking God's blessing. So we want to welcome Reverend Grace Burton Edwards from St. Thomas. Good morning.
Good morning. Let us pray. Loving God, you have brought us in safety to this new day. Preserve us with your mighty power that we may not be overcome by adversity. And in all we do, direct us to the fulfilling of your purpose. We give thanks for this city, for all of its hope and life and possibility, and pray that we may work with you to kindle and strengthen that light. We give thanks for our leaders and ask that all would be guided with a desire to do your will and to do the best for all the people that we serve. We pray for all people in this community, the, the well-known and powerful and the lonely and forgotten, and pray that we all would be empowered with a deep sense of the value and wonder and dignity of every human being. We offer before you the work of this day, trusting that you will take our offering and do even more with it than we can ask or imagine. And we seek and ask all of these things in accordance with your love for us all.
Reverend, listen, thank you so much for being here. And I gotta tell you, your church is a beacon in our community for inclusivity and diversity and sharing God's word with everybody in our community. So thank you. And I believe your partner in education is Brewer Elementary, the Brewer Elementary. So we are glad to have them there. Y'all wanna come up and we'll let you lead us in the pledge.
Our pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Don't go anywhere, don't go anywhere. Come back, come back. I guarantee you, parents and family members wanna see your faces on TV a little bit longer. I'm gonna ask if you would, just give us your name and your age and your, maybe your grade and your teacher if you want to.
My name is Toreddie Haines. I'm nine years old. My other teacher is Ms. T- my teacher is Ms. T. Woods. Hello. Oh, and I'm in 4th grade.
My name is Destiny, my name is Destiny Brown. I'm in 4th grade and my teacher's named Ms. Rogers and I'm 10 years old.
My name is Tanaya. My name is Tanaya and I'm in 4th grade and my teacher's Ms. Cooks.
My name is Tom Morris and I'm in 4th grade and I'm 10 years old and I'm, I'm in Ms. T. Woods' class.
My name is Joshua and I'm in 1st grade and I'm 6 years old.
My name is McKevia Delap and I'm in, I'm 11 years old and my teacher's named Ms. Woodersey.
My name is Jacale Forre. I am 10 and my class is Ms. Woodersey and I am in Ms. Woodersey's homeroom.
My name is Alyssa Raymond. I'm in 5th. I'm 11 and my homeroom teacher is Ms. Woodersey.
My name is Leila Klaunce. I'm in 5th grade and my teacher's name is Mr. Eppelhart.
My name is Darren and I'm 11 years old and I'm in the 4th grade and my teacher's Ms. Rogers.
My name is Tia and I'm 5 years old and my teacher's name is Ms. Cooks.
Why don't you tell us his name?
His name is Major Battle. Battle, Battle? Which one? Major, his name is Major.
His name is Major.
And he's in kindergarten, Ms. P. Cooks' class. And he's very talkative and that's why I'm so shy. I'm Kelly Wells. I'm the media specialist at Brewer Elementary. I didn't know I was gonna say a few things about Brewer, but I've been there for 21 years. It is my heart and I love these kids. And we would love for you to come visit anytime. We're doing some really great things at Brewer. And so I thought, instead of hearing it from me, maybe you would like to hear it from my friend Leila. Just gonna tell you a few things that they're doing.
So at Brewer, we have a lot of clubs. Some of the clubs are cheerleading, step team, art club, math club, science, Olympics, reading ball. An example of one of the clubs is reading ball where we read books and we go to a competition where we get quiz on the books.
Well, there is indeed a lot going on at Brewer. And you guys represented the school exceptionally well. Thank you for leading us in the pledge and you guys will have to come back and do it again. Thank you. Y'all give me a hand. All right, I've got a couple of announcements, but I'm gonna go ahead and ask for approval of the minutes. We've got a motion second to approve the minutes. All those in favor, please say aye. Any post? Couple of quick comments. One, about nine days ago, a summer storm in our region turned into a devastating tornado. And it wound its way through Alabama, caught the northwest corner of Muskogee County, and then went on up into Harris County and then made a right and went straight through Elersley and Talbot County. Our hearts and prayers remain with the families of those that lost their lives in Beauregard. They are with the people who lost so many, so much property in, in Talboton. Columbus got hit too. We had some neighborhoods in our county that I think the only, the only time I've seen anything look like that is when I watch old war movies and the bomb scenes. It's really hard to describe what, what we witnessed in the way of property damage and destruction through our county. And I've got to lift up, we will recognize them probably the first meeting of, of next month when we can maybe bring a proclamation or a resolution. But our people once again just proved that there are no more dedicated workers anywhere than the personnel at the Columbus Consolidated Government. Pat Beigler and her staff, their crew was on standby even as the storm was brewing before it even hit. We got about 32 calls through our 311 center and they were kinda spread out. So there were a lot of little pockets of, of damage. Again, the most of it occurred along River, Biggers, Whitesville Road and maybe even out towards, towards Smith Road. Our crews, our public safety responded, it's kind of unfortunate. We've, we've become kinda numb to it. We expect it and, and they, they exceeded even those expectations. We ran into it 4 o'clock in the morning on Monday. There was day shift from the police department that, that was supposed to get off at 3 o'clock in the afternoon on Sunday. Still working to try to get people through to their homes. As trees, trees were down over roads, roads were blocked. Our Public Works folks have picked up over 20,000 cubic yards of debris just off the right of way. They estimate another 30,000 cubic yards will be placed on the side of the road by residents who are trying to clear their properties. We diverted all of the graballs from Waste Management and, and went out to the storm damaged area on Sunday night and then had them go back Wednesday through Saturday to pick up all of that stuff. And I can tell you, as one of the residents that got clipped a little bit, they, they got to where they were waiting at the road as our, our friends and neighbors were helping us clear debris. They'd take it down there and the city would just pick it up and put it on a truck till the truck was full and then haul it, haul it off. We anticipate that, well, of course, we have waived the tree for fee program for all the residents through April 4th. And we have waived tipping fees. Now, if you're a resident and you wanna get that tipping fee waived as you haul your own debris, you must call 311 and you have to get a certificate by showing your driver's license, show that you're in Muskogee County so that we understand that we are in fact waiving those fees for somebody who was impacted by the storm. But Georgia Power had about 95% of the residents back up by Sunday night, I think. I mean, they, they got right on it. Diverse Power, who serves most of the area that was, was impacted, had a little bit bigger struggle, but they had a bigger hill to climb. They had 40 poles that were, that were broken. They were splintered just in that area. So the, while people, some people were complaining it took four days to get powered, they set 40 poles, got the transformers back up, wired everything in four days and delivered service back to the people that were dependent upon them. So they did an amazing job too. There's also another organization, I don't, I don't see anybody from there. Is anybody here from Samaritan's Purse? I had invited them to try to attend. This is a faith-based organization that is a worldwide disaster response team. It was started back in the 70s and it was sort of taken over and really pushed by Franklin Graham and the Franklin Graham Ministry. And I, my first encounter with them was as we were clearing with a number of friends that I can't thank enough and I'm not gonna start naming them because I'll forget somebody. A lot of friends showed up at our house wielding chainsaws and, and carrying their own Band-Aids thankfully, but, and helped us try to begin the effort to clear our, our lot. And we noticed a bunch of, looked like orange ants. Looked like about 50 to 60 people on my neighbor's lot in orange t-shirts. And that was Samaritan's Purse. These folks respond to disasters anywhere on the planet almost simultaneously with the disaster occurring. They do it, they, they have two missions. There's only two things they do. One is to, to spread the word of God and two is to help those who need it the most at that particular time. I wish they were here, they could tell you how they ended up in Columbus, but I know they were trying to get to Beauregard. I think the president's arrival superseded any volunteer efforts at that particular time. So they came to Muskogee County. A lot of folks from the Auburn, Opelika area. There were a lot of folks from, I, I met with a pastor of a church in Philadelphia who, he said he and his wife's marriage has been a disaster because that's how they spend all their vacation time is going to disasters. People from North Carolina, people from West Virginia. And, and it's hard to describe unless you're sitting there trying to see over a mountain of debris in your own yard, the feeling you get when you see these orange shirts marching onto your property to do nothing other than to help you try to get your life back in order. So to those folks, we want to say thank you. We're glad you're in our community. And I, I know, I know that they will be on our donation list going forward, seeing them in action. But, but our city crews and, and volunteers, you know, did what we do in Columbus. And that is we, we immediately reach out and find ways to help our neighbors, even if our neighbors are in Alabama or if they're in another county like Talboton. So anyway, just wanted to lift those folks up and kinda share that very quickly. Counselor Huff?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to say to council and to the Columbus community this morning, two things. Before we get to the high note, Carver High School lost theater actress instructor there that was big in the arts community here. Tamara Curry-Gill. Services were held on Saturday and she had done some outstanding work here with the kids at Carver and all out through the community. So just wanted to let you know, please reach out to the family and keep them in your prayers. And for Carver having such a loss, it was a great, great, great moment that the girls and the boys won the state championship in basketball to bring some happiness back to the school. So just wanted to congratulate the school this morning. The mayor and others will be involved in the planning of some type of celebration for the kids in the school. And it's just such a happy time. The mayor and I had had a quick talk about the fact, we can't remember, maybe some of you all know, if Columbus has ever had a girls and boys team to win at the same time, I don't know. And if it's ever happened in the state of Georgia. But it's, it's a big celebration and, and we want to congratulate them and just let you all know what's going on and hopefully you all will be a part of what's going on coming up soon. Thank you.
Yes, sir. And Lisa Goodwin from the city manager's office is our contact with the school and with the group organizing this celebration. My understanding is they're shooting for 2 o'clock on Sunday at the civic center. And she's nodding saying, yes, that's correct. But you'll get details. We will get the details out. I might, I think there's gonna be a parade and a citywide celebration because this is in fact a very unique and, and pretty special, pretty special deal. And speaking of Carver, they're, my favorite alumna, alumnus from Carver is Mayor Pro Tem.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanna say to the Carver family, congratulations. You wanted it, you did it, you got it. And to see those young people win like they did, it was just unreal. And I am so glad to be a member of the Carver family. An older member, but still.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Davis? They get you? Nope? There you go. There we go.
Mayor, thank you. I wanna go back to, to what you gracious enough to tell us a little bit about the, the update and the information on what all took place and transpired during the tornado and the aftermath, et cetera. But, you know, I too, I was amazed at just what I saw last weekend and helping people in the area. I too saw all those folks in orange and it just wasn't in a neighborhood. They were all over. I, I must've seen about 500 of them, but there were some other groups that were involved too. A group called Prepare and Respond. I've never heard of them before, but these folks came out of, I believe, Tennessee somewhere and brought a ton of equipment. Chainsaws, all kinds of stuff. And I think they worked right alongside of the volunteers from Samaritan's Purse. But then in talking to other of our citizens here who are involved in some of these areas of, you know, you hear a lot about people who are often responding first, like the Red Cross and others. But to hear the story of one of our citizens talk about our, one of our local agencies, the Salvation Army. Salvation Army here in Columbus and in the area was the first, my understanding, the first to respond in Beauregard and Alabama. And they just mobilized and you really don't think about that, how these organizations work and what they're capable of doing, what they do for, for folks. And it made me, made me really proud. So Mayor, in the light of your words and what you said, I think it's appropriate that I call for a resolution. Reckon, I'm sure you'll do something from your office, but recognizing all these various organizations for, you know, just, you know, us being grateful for what they did for us. I remember the last, I was in the middle of the last tornado and, you know, we all banded together and helped out and helped each other. But to see these folks come from, they were from all over. I mean, really, they were from all over. They came to Columbus. And then to see them even more so with public services, working alongside our public services. I mean, that was, you talking about teamwork and the unity there and how they were just, they were making it happen. It was, it was something to watch. So I think it's appropriate that we recognize all of them. So I'd like to call for a resolution.
We'll, we'll get city attorney's office to draft one and we'll bring it to the proclamation event. And, you know, I gotta point out too, that it was, when I say, when I mentioned public safety, it wasn't just the police department. I saw sheriffs vehicles patrolling, 'cause our area, the roads were closed up until about Friday. Didn't have any power until Wednesday. And I know I saw a marshal's deputy come up into our driveway and check. And, and so it was, it was just a total team effort. And it's, it's interesting how when, when, when you really desperately need folks, how Columbus steps up, man, I tell you. Counselor Thomas?
I wanna go back for just a minute to the Carver High School. I had a conversation yesterday with Dr. David Lewis, the superintendent. And he said that he was in Macon at the, at the game. And he said, "You haven't been in a ballgame until you've seen the last 10 seconds of that game." And, and the Carver boys did it, won it. But he said after the game, he was standing there talking and this guy walked up to him and said, "I understand you're the superintendent." And Dr. Lewis said, "Uh, yeah." And the guy said, "Well, I am the manager of this facility." And he said, "I want you to know that we have never had a group of kids in this facility who behaved as well as your Carver kids." He said, "They cheered when they ought to cheer. They never booed." He said, "When they got finished eating their snacks, they put their trash in the trash can. And I just want you to know how much it, the impression that it made on the staff of this facility." And I thought, you know, for the kids to make not only the athletic impression that they did, but the fans that were there, to the point that the manager of the facility sinks out the superintendent. This is, you know, we're not surprised. Our Carver kids know and our kids all over Muskogee County know how to behave when they go out of town. But I just wanted to share that with you because I thought it was very significant that it was, not only did they win in the ballgame, but they won in the public relations department too.
Well, listen, I thank you for pointing that out because it's, not all winners act like champions. And, and the Carver kids did. And that brought credit upon themselves, their family, their school and their city, and we appreciate it. Counselor Huff?
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Crabbe? I saw where we had some emails going back and forth about a resolution for Carver High School. So wanted to just publicly announce that the resolution is being called for this morning from Counselor Crabbe and the council, Counselor Huff and everybody. But I'd just like to ask your indulgence that it being in my district, if I could read it on Sunday?
I just wanted it to be taken care of.
Yeah, that's good. I just wanna make sure we're all together, working together. Okay. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure we have a, a resolution for them on Sunday.
Got it. I imagine we'll have that and a little bit more.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Woodson?
Well, I just wanna say congratulations to Carver too, even though I'm a Spencer mom. But I was very, very proud of them. And it's funny about, Ms. Crabbe, about the resolution because I was at the women's luncheon and I was sitting with Judy, who used to work in the mayor's office. And when she got the text, the first thing she did was elbow me and said, "It's on your phone. Send it now." So I think that the excitement has been all over, that everyone's been contacting everyone. And I'm pretty sure the mayor's office has said, "I got it, I got it." Because I don't know about anybody else, but I got like four or five, you know, texts on and I'm like, "It's already in the works. It's already in the works." So it's a very exciting time for Columbus.
Absolutely. For the record, the city manager's working on this Saturday morning. So we, we didn't let any grass grow in our feet. We jumped right in there. We wanna make sure these young people get the recognition that they have earned.
And I, I think it's important that our constituents know that, that when we do get things, we respond as quickly as we can. Especially in an event like this where it puts Columbus on the map again. And, and that's what's so special. And for those that say, "Oh, there's nothing to do in Columbus." Well, there's a lot to do and we have a lot to be proud of. I wish that some, someday somebody would just take a, and make a video of all these wonderful, you know, championship programs we've had in Columbus and air it so that people can see, we are on the map. We are on the move. We are a progressive city. And our people are very proud of where they live and who they are.
Look, you know, we hear so much about young people in the community and it's not always positive. There's generalizations made. And I'm telling you, the good kids far outweigh the numbers that, that might not act the way we want them to. There's a young man who's a senior in, in Carver who is interning in my office. Sharpest kid I've ever met. Well, next to mine, of course. But, but, but the point is, is you, you don't shortchange these kids just because a lot of the youth tend to find negative activities to get involved in. There's a lot of good things going on. We're gonna celebrate some this weekend. I'm gonna call up, if there's no more comments, I'm gonna call up our auditor, internal auditor, Mr. Redmond. He was asked to take a look at our procurement procedures. And one of the reasons we, we push this forward, we don't wanna get involved in procurement procedures. We don't get involved in the, the weeds about individuals who have, who have submitted a bid. But this is just to kinda let the public know that, that we, just sort of a check of how we're handling things.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, Mr. Manager, Mr. Attorney, Ms. Madam Clerk. Glad to be here this morning with you. I wanna really review at a, kind of a high level, a very simplistic approach to our procurement process. And I wanted to talk to you a little bit first about separation of duties. We talk about separation of duties, but usually when we talk about that, it's in financial terms. We're talking about how the money is handled. For example, in the finance department, the one group takes the money in, records it, puts it in the bank. Someone else makes journal entries. Someone else prepares financial statements and handles those things. Even a separate person handles investments. And we do that to, really to not only protect the assets of the city, but we also do it to protect the individuals involved. And likewise, we do the same thing in the procurement process. I've had the experience of serving on a number of purchasing committees over the 11 years that I've been with the city. And I've worked with the, the purchasing division of the finance department numerous times outside of that as well. And I knew going into this a lot about that process. And their process is probably the best one that I've seen in a, in a local government in the state, at least in the state of Georgia. There may be some somewhere else, but Andrea McCorvey has headed that division for some time and they do an excellent job. They're very dedicated to their process. And that leads me to the separation. And there's really, there's three distinct groups or lanes that we're talking about here. Procurement administration is handled by the purchasing division of the finance department. They're the interface, particularly when we have situations where vendors are, are responding to our requests for, whether it be a bid or it's a request for a proposal or quotation, whatever it are. And I believe Angelique Alexander, our finance director, will be giving more information on that a little bit later in the program. I don't wanna get down into the details of that. But what I wanna talk about is they handle the administrative aspects of that from start to finish. They also support and draft the people to serve on the purchasing committees as well as having all the materials prepared, copies of all the proposals, whatever it may be, for the committee to review. Likewise, if the committee has any questions whatsoever, they're the go-to people. They go back to the vendors, whether it be one vendor specifically or if it's a generalization question that applies to all, they go back to them and get a response and bring it back. And then ultimately, once the committee does their work and makes a recommendation, then they move it up through the finance director to the city manager and it ends up on his purchase agenda. Now, the evaluation of the proposals is done by the members of the committee that's appointed to look at that particular item. Sometimes it's a service, sometimes it's, it's goods that we're looking at purchasing. But whatever it may be, the committee is formed and it's people that are involved with, either with the activity that's going on or the particular product or service that's been requested by the user department. And they have representation on there as well as others that have some expertise to lend. I don't know how all these people are selected, but I've found that they put together some pretty good committees. And I've been pleased to have worked with them and served on them. In that process, there's usually a, a number of, that are voting members and those people are the ones that actually do the voting on the selection process. But there are also other members that are on there that are non-voting, but they're advisory members. And those people provide quite a bit of insight regarding the service or the goods that we're looking at. And I want you to be aware. And then obviously, the third group, which is very important, is you, the city council. And occasionally, the mayor gets to participate in the, in the selection when there's a And occasionally, the mayor gets to participate in the, in the selection when there's a five-five tie. But you all are the ones that ultimately approve the purchase, just as you appropriate the funds for the budget. Very important response. Uh, I've talked a little bit about the procurement process and what's involved. You know, it starts out with a department that's making a request to purchase a good or a service. They forward that to the purchasing division of finance, and they begin to work together. They review the specifications for the particular item or service. They look at the timeline for the purchase and, and any other pertinent information. And they, they pair, then the purchasing division prepares a procurement document of the format, because when we get proposals in, if you look at those books, and if you've served on a committee, you know that there's, there are sections in there, and they're all matched up. There's certain information, maybe the background on the company or the individual performing the service, there's, uh, their capabilities are listed in one section, there's pricing that's way down in another section, uh, quite a few things, a copy of their business license, and, uh, sometimes, uh, information about their key personnel that are gonna be involved. So they provide us with all the good information that we need. Uh, they're also responsible for placing the advertisements, and not on the legal organ, but on the city's website, and on other newspapers and websites, and, and periodicals that need to be advertised in. They handle those aspects, I would say, with that division. Then they get down to selecting a purchasing review committee. They identify employees from within the city that are believed to have knowledge or involvement in a product or service, or work with the vendors that are serving us, if it's not a city-provided service. They include representatives from the requesting department. It's usually six or more people, of which an odd number of three or more will be the deciding factor on the voting. I've served on most of them that had three, some have had, had five, but, uh, pretty much it's in that range. And then there's usually about an equal number or more of, of non-voting or advisory members. Moving on, the purchasing division is very careful to instruct the purchasing committee on the review process, stressing highly confidentiality. We don't discuss it outside of that, not even with fellow employees when we go back to our work areas. We keep the materials that we are provided very close at hand, close to the vest, so to speak. And when the process is over, those are returned to the purchasing division for them to either secure or destroy as, as necessary. Uh, they also explain to us the review process and the scoring sheet. They provide copies of each of the qualifying proposal binders, and we then schedule meetings, usually over the next two or three weeks, to, after we get the binders and have time to review them, to come back to begin discussing the issue. They also stress the importance of attendance on the committees, and that, that's usually the time when something changes. The last one I was on, we had one particular member that was a voting member who happened to be scheduled out of town on both of the critical dates for the committee to meet. On the first one, the person called in and did it, uh, over a speakerphone. The individual could not make the second one. They, they made a substitution and put a different person in, in the voting role, and put that one to advisory, because they had a lot of input that was needed by the committee. So that does change from time to time, but generally speaking, it works well through the process. Uh, they also add any additional information or obtain it or clarify it for us with the Once the committee members complete their review of all the submissions, they prepare a scoring sheet. Each committee member submits a scoring sheet to the purchasing division. They then tally the scoring sheets without disclosing voter member names. When it shows up on a tally sheet, it'll say voter A, B, C, or one, two, three, or something like that. They never list the name of the particular person that's voting. And they do that because it provides for the anonymity of the people that are voting, and helps keep them out of the fray of the process of being contacted, you know, by, by the vendors and so forth. Uh, and that's for their benefit and protection. Uh, once all that is done, then the committee, uh, goes through the process and they vote. And, uh, a lot of times it's unanimous, but sometimes there will be a split vote, and so they really try to talk that out and, and discern what the differences are and where somebody's vote's a little different than the others. Because sometimes someone missed some, one of the facts in the proposal, and that they may, uh, have to relook at and rediscover it. But once they make their recommendation, then it's passed up the line by the purchasing division personnel to, uh, the city manager ultimately to go on his purchases' agenda for the council. And of course, then he brings it forward, and you all, as city council, then you either approve it, or you reject it, or you may ask for more information. Sometimes you want to know a little bit more about it. And, uh, that's the purchasing division's responsibility to provide you whatever information you may need to assist you in your decision-making. Uh, then once it's done, uh, they get back with the vendor and finalize the contract, and then it goes through the, the signing process and is placed into effect. And, uh, then the copies of the contract are, of course, distributed, and the original is supposed to come back and reside in the clerk of council's office, but there are copies in a number of other places. Next, I want to talk a little bit about the TMS process, and, uh, this is the process for the, uh, the, the information management system. It's related to what we typically talked about as, as the towing and the storage of vehicles. We had a couple of vendors that bitted on this particular one. I think you're aware of them. The incumbent was the Columbus Towing and Recovery. And we had a new vendor that, uh, came up this time, or a newer one to us, Griffin and Griffin Towing, who's also interested in submitting a bid. Uh, the bids were requested, uh, back in late summer. They were due in to, to the purchasing division by October 5th last year, 2018. The purchasing committee was then selected to make a site, and they elected during their process to make a site visit to both vendors, because they felt like that was a necessary part of their process, because they wanted to look at the capacity for storage and, uh, for handling the vehicles, and also the equipment that was used for the, the towing processes. And that's, uh, certainly a, a reasonable request in a case like that. I think during this process, a citizen contacted, uh, one of our counselors on January 16th to complain about his disabled truck being towed, and then, uh, so forth, and the amount of the charge, and didn't feel like there was a lot of empathy or customer service when he went to pick it up. The counselors responded back to this, uh, individual on January 18th. Counselors also notified the city manager and the mayor, uh, a little bit later, several weeks later, on February 11th of the citizen complaint. And, uh, then I think following that, several counselors, very diligent in doing their job, they, they wanted to go out and visit the sites as well, and they did. Uh, purchasing committee then recommended Columbus Towing and Recovery, I think when that was posted, probably on ECAP or, or in the, published in the newspaper on Sunday before the meeting. The vendor that was not selected, uh, sent an email to members of council, the mayor, city manager, and others regarding the process and concerns. And, uh, of course, the city manager already had it posted on ECAP for this, so, uh, then the city manager ended up pulling the procurement award from the list of purchases, uh, for further review and investigation. Uh, the selected vendor then learned of the other vendor's communication to the city manager, and also contacted them regarding postponement and other concerns. And I think maybe some of that was prompted by other counselor visits. Uh, two weeks ago, on March 5th, the mayor and council authorized the investigation by the internal auditors of, of this, uh, particular activity, and particularly looking at the procurement process. As I've said earlier, the process works very well, but it works best when everyone stays in their lanes, and, and stays with their particular group. Uh, I concluded that there was no criminal wrongdoing, no one, I didn't see anything that anybody's gonna be getting in trouble for. But the point is, it helps, if the process works and the way is structured, it works best if you remain insulated from the process. And so today, I'm here presenting the findings, and here are the findings. We had a citizen complaint that probably should have been presented to management as a council referral upon receipt, rather than being investigated and handled by our counselors. But I applaud the counselors for being involved and wanting to take care and get involved with it. I know you get a lot of complaints from citizens. They talk about driving too fast on their streets, and you know, they, we've had some that came before us on the public agenda that talk about that, as well as contact you. There's times they call you about garbage that hadn't been removed, or trees that haven't been picked up, and we're probably getting some of those calls now, wondering when some of the debris is gonna be picked up. But those kind of things are easy enough to go out and look at and see, particularly if there's, somebody's a hoarder and got a lot of trash in the yard. You know, that, that's something that you may, uh, need to look at individually. But when it regards a city service, either whether it's being provided by city employees or by a contracted provider, you need to refer that to management, and I recommend it go through the city manager for most items. If it happens to be public safety or something that's under the mayor's discretion, then find and report to the mayor. But, uh, let them handle it, and then they'll get back to you the response, and hopefully they can resolve whatever the issue may be. Let's see. Uh, in this particular case, the non-selected vendor contacted the mayor and counselors, which is in violation of their signed agreement in their proposal. Uh, then a couple of councils went out and visited the site during the process. Then the current vendor responded with an email to all of you, which is also prohibited. And then, of course, the city manager had pulled it for recommendation for further review. Now, I don't like to bring you all problems and issues and concerns unless I can also bring you a solution. And today I offer to you some, uh, five recommendations that I think will help resolve this particular situation, and also help us going forward. One is to cancel the current procurement request and notify the vendors of the cancellation. Second is to extend the current month-to-month extension of the previous contract through the end of 2019. Thirdly, amend the current city ordinances to clearly state that contact with mayor and city counselors during the procurement process by a vendor is prohibited and will result in automatic disqualification of a vendor's proposal. That will stop vendors from calling you and contacting. Conversely, mayor and council should not engage themselves or refrain from getting involved in the procurement process until a recommendation for purchase is presented by the city manager on your agenda for voting. And then you take care of the voting, handle that. Finally, the purchasing, uh, uh, we recommend that they should re-advertise the TMS contract opportunity in the coming months, and have a selected vendor approved and prepared to assume the contract at the end of the current extended period, which we would anticipate would be January 1st. And also that the purchasing division, this is kind of minor, this is kind of a housekeeping rule, but they should revise the, or reorder the procurement document to include the rules of participation on the same page that, with the vendor's signature and date. I know that when you, it's kind of like filling out an application, you're accredited, a job, or whatever, you're filling out all these things, maybe you're at the doctor's office, you're filling out a bunch of forms, and you hurry through them and sign them. But I want to make sure that vendors understand what the rules are. It's kind of like the rules of engagement. They need to know what they can do and what they can't, and that will help them stay in their lane as well. Fortunately, there was no harm here that really caused any terrible grief, but I think if we work through these things, we can resolve this particular one and move forward. Uh, I think that's the best way to handle it, and, uh, I would recommend that to you for consideration. Any questions from anyone?
Yes, uh, we do. Counselor Davis?
Okay.
Mayor, I think, thank you. Uh, I think there's one action on there for the city manager, I mean, city attorney to, uh, get involved with, I believe. Um, the other one, the, the rest of the recommendations from our auditor is, I believe, our internal policies. Is that right, Mr. City Manager? Is it? Would that be done within?
You want to go back a slide?
Mayor, yeah. Um, yes, sir, and, um, I, um, our finance director, um, also has a, um, an update on procurement process that will talk about, um, internal policies, but, but yes.
I think the recommendations were very sound, uh, and represent, I think, in my opinion, a prudent course of action at this juncture.
I, I do agree.
You, you can take care of those things, and like, when you say?
Administrative.
Your office.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. Okay, and then I think, the city attorney?
Right.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, great. Counselor Huff?
I'm good with recommendations, but I would somehow like to request that, not to play this out on camera today, but I'd like to go back through the process. There's a few pieces of the process I'm not comfortable with that went down.
Okay.
Uh, I'd like to follow through to see, once it gets to certain stages, how many people we have on this committee, how many people vote, how the process passes on from one place to the other. How do we, as counselors, read our agenda and keep up with what's coming? And when can we ask questions, and when we can't ask questions?
Okay. Well, you generally, you know when things are advertised, if, if it's out, purchases usually on the list of purchases is presented during the council meetings before they happen. Of course, then it's a period of time that goes through the process before it really comes back to you for your vote. Certainly, if you have questions in the, in the way, you can always contact the purchasing division, and those people are very capable, whether it be Andrea, Adela, or any of the others that are in there that are buyers and assist with the purchasing activities.
They, they were great.
They're great. They did a fine job.
In reading my agenda, my agenda said that we had, I guess, a December 31st date or something, the end of the year that the contract would happen. So I normally read these all the time. Every now and then, I'll ask a question to the city manager in, in open session.
Right.
And I kind of keep up sometimes, and this just happens to be one, but I do them all like that.
Okay.
And when I get to the point of trying to figure out if you, if we had a December 31st date, now we down to January, February, we down to March, you know?
Well, that's why you're in a month-to-month renewal. It actually ended, I believe, on November 30th, the, the existing contract. And there are times when there are various delays in the process, and, and that, that's somewhat understandable. And usually, the current vendor will agree to a month-to-month continuation. It's kind of like if your lease expires on a house that you're living in, and you need to stay on a few more months, you can usually, uh, stay in there and just pay month-to-month for the remainder of the time. And generally, in that situation, you pay a little bit of a premium, uh, for the, you know, for the privilege of doing that without a, a lengthier contract. But in, in this case, vendors are generally supportive. And, you know, I recall several years ago, particularly with towing, that we really didn't have a lot of, a lot of interest in the contracts in the past. Uh, I'm thankful that we now have at least some, some more people in that business that are interested in pursuing it. But when you provide that service for the city, it's a big job, and it requires a lot of equipment, a lot of manpower, because when you have one of these pileups on 185 or JR Allen Parkway, or, or even on some of the internal corridors through the city, uh, sometimes you got a lot of vehicles to move at one time. It's kind of like all these trees that are down, and logs and materials that Mayor Henderson brought up earlier. You gotta have a bit of capacity. And one thing, uh, maybe, when it goes out for bids again, they may decide, you know, to split up the contract or bitted in a little bit different way, or they may want to have multiple vendors. And if that's the case, you know, I think that's fine. Make that work.
Yeah, but according, according to the bid, they had to be able to take care of any pileups, anything. They had to have the manpower and the...
That's correct.
The equipment in order to, to participate and be chosen.
Right.
And then when, when it...
Yes, sir.
When it was leaning the other way, there was no talk of splitting the contract. When it went, it flipped on us, then we talked about splitting 50/50, so we have to look out for both sides.
Absolutely.
And then some things came up about, uh, capacity for one versus the other that had nothing to do with the contract itself. And it's just some things I'd like to...
Okay.
...go over with someone...
Sure.
...to help me, because, uh, I don't have a problem with the vendors. I just have a problem with the process.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Because if, 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 if you have a contract for a number of years, and you do a great service for the city, I understand continuation from time to time. But sometimes you have someone coming along, Counselor Thomas or someone comes along, or Counselor Garrett, and we have new people in, in the game.
Absolutely.
And if the process, I just want the process to remain the same for all.
Okay.
Well, and, Mr. Mayor, you know, if I may, and, and I certainly understand the questions coming from, um, the coun... from the counselor, and I think when we get to the finance director's update, it'll tell you how this stuff is generated, that it gets to the finance office, then it goes through the process, and it's coming from the user agency. And, you know, the one thing I ask that they do is to make sure that in specifications, that when it comes from the user agency, they're not writing out, or writing off agencies that, that the specs don't come forward in a way that it excludes some from being able to participate because they're trying to direct it to a particular agency. And that's important. That is biased, and we certainly cannot have that. And so whether it's purchasing a vehicle, a truck, a bus, or a, a service, the purchasing division has to make sure that we are not narrowing the specs that we're trying to select or identify one particular vendor. That's an issue. And if they are not doing that, and it comes to my attention, we're not a problem. We cannot do that. And, and so I, I hear your question, understand your question, and, and when it came forward to me, not to get into the details of, of it all, we've got to have a baseline of service that any vendor can provide, and if they can't meet that baseline, then they're obviously not going to be considered in the final analysis. But if there's an opportunity, we want to make sure that there's an opportunity for all taxpaying businesses in our community. And so, and I've challenged staff, yeah, I started talking about more than one, because we, we have a, a practice of having more than one architectural firm on the list, we have a practice of having more than one engineering firm on a list, we have a practice of having more than one property appraisals on a list, and, and a lawyer's on the list, and so forth and so on. And so if there's an opportunity to open up to others, we want to certainly be able to do that.
If that's going to be an opportunity going forward, I'm okay with that.
Well, we're
I didn't know that
Yeah, we're going to look at
We're going that direction, but we're going that direction.
We're going to look at that, but we're not going to compromise levels of service or requirements
Right.
To add someone on.
Right.
But I can certainly say that we're, we're, we are going to, to look at it, not, in other categories than the one that, ones that I've named.
Okay.
So you can be assured of that.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, and, and you know, I think the thing to remember is that the purchasing process is a strictly administrative event, and that's it. And it, and it's by design, it protects the people making the bid, and it protects us sitting around this table. Now, if you've got questions about how somebody got it, wait till the bid is done, and then go take a look at the process and see if it was, if you think it wasn't accurate. But it needs to stay, it, it provides a buffer for this body so that we can be above reproach. Citizens know that they're getting a very analytical decision made on, on who provides services for them, so, thank you. All right, Mr. Redmond? Oh, we do have one more question, I'm sorry. Counselor Thom, Thomas.
Given what, what you've just said, Mr. Mayor, and what Mr. Redmond presented, I don't want anyone to leave this conversation thinking that it's not appropriate for councilors to have questions at the proper point
Right.
In the procurement procedure. That is our lane
Yes, it is.
To ask questions and to have responses given to us by whomever it is, whether it be the city manager, the finance director, the procurement folks. It, it is our responsibility to spend the $275 million budget of this city, and it is our responsibility to ask questions if there are questions that need to be asked. And if I, if I feel like that I don't have enough information, or I need additional information, I'm going to ask those questions. And that's my, I think, my obligation as a counselor, to make sure that we are doing what we should be doing to spend the money in the proper way. I don't in any way want to give any impression that this particular case, that I feel like that the administration did anything incorrect. I don't, I don't think that at all. But I do want to be sure that with all of the things that were recommended up here, that it, that councilors remember that your job is to ask questions if you don't have the information that you need to make a good decision.
And, and, Mr. Mayor, I unequivocally, absolutely, more than 100% agree with that. And Counselor, you demonstrate that at every council meeting.
[laughing]
Not, not you, I'm saying, this body.
[inaudible]
But, but absolutely, and, and we have a responsibility as staff to answer your questions. And if we're not answering your questions, you should not approve what we put before you, because you have a fiduciary responsibility to your constituents, to all of the citizens, to make sure that $275 million is spent and accounted for in a way that would be pleasing to them.
We're on the same page.
We're on the same page. Absolutely.
Counselor Crabbe.
Thank you, Mr. Redmond. I do have one slight correction to the timeline you presented.
Okay.
Because there were no visits from council to the, to people that placed, the two companies that placed the bid until after it was pulled from the agenda. And I just wanted to make sure that we clarified that.
It was not, from the documents that I reviewed, it was not apparent as to when it occurred, but it did occur, I think
It did.
That's not an issue.
I just, you know, I just feel that, that timeline showing that it, that it happened prior to it being on the agenda or being pulled from the agenda makes a big difference that it, it showed that the visits happened prior or after. I think that it showing that it happened after it had been pulled from the agenda shows what Counselor Thomas brought up. We were going, we were doing our due diligence so that we could make the appropriate vote.
But I think, I think the point is that the, the proposal was still open, and they were still bidding. And so I think the correct, I think the correct process was still to go through
It had been pulled from the agenda.
I knew it was, I knew it, right, I know it had been pulled from the agenda, but I thought the bid process was still open at that point.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if, if I may.
Sure.
It, it is clear that if there is a complaint, and I think that's what the auditor was trying to convey, that needs to be investigated. It needs to be done through the administration and through the process, and a, the results of the investigation brought back to this council. But it appears that council went to do its own investigation, and that's where there's a mix-up.
Okay.
And initially, I don't want to get into it all, but initially, we were ready to throw one out and bring in the other. And then, at the end of the day, you're ready to bring that one and not the other. And so it needs to be handled through the administration. If you've got an issue, we will, through the internal auditor, through the finance department, investigate it and bring you the results. We, we will do that.
Okay.
And so with, but, but if you, I'll just leave it at that.
I understand. I know, I understand what you're, what you're saying.
Sure.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments?
Mayor Henderson, I'd like to make one more.
Yes, sir.
I certainly concur with Counselor Thomas, that you have not only a responsibility and an obligation to do it, but you know it's the right thing to do. If you don't have all the information you need, by all means, please ask the questions. Our administrative group will get you those answers, or we will dig deeper until we find the answers, if they exist. But I applaud you for your interest in, in involvement, and that's one thing I've noticed over the years, that this council has consistently paid attention and been involved and engaged, more than some in other communities are. Some, it's just kind of a matter of you show up and raise your hand and vote a few times and you go home. But y'all ask a lot of insightful questions, and sometimes you bring up questions that are very good ones that maybe haven't been looked into. And that's what I've found in working on the purchasing committees, serving there, that some of the best insight comes from the non-voting advisory members. I recall one that I was on where Ms. Hodges, at the time, was the finance director, and she had some very good points to make that were not something that would be part of the proposal or part of any of the others' questions. And certainly, when you've got people that serve on that committee that are frankly going to have to live with whoever is selected over the next two, three, five years, whatever period, they have a vested interest as well in making sure that they do their due diligence. So I think the process is good. Sometimes things just shift around a little bit and need to be changed, but we appreciate your consideration today.
And, and, Mr. Mayor.
This, yes, sir.
If you agree, if you all accept the auditor's recommendation to do the month-to-month through the end of 2019, then we will bring that back to ask you to approve the month-to-month through the end of 2019, and during that time period, finance will be going through the process to go back out and procure, and we'll look at the things that I've said we will look at from Counselor Huff, as to whether there will be more than one or not, but we'll look at a process that's open and fair to any business in our city wanting to do business with the city.
Okay. Do we need an oral resolution to accept the auditor's recommendations?
Not ready to.
All right, well, Counselor Huff.
Yeah, I'm not ready to accept it either at this point. Is there not a way for us to work through this process, maybe, in having answered by the beginning of our new budget?
Well, if, if we are going to have a, if we're going to allow for an opportunity to take a different approach, no. It sounds like you are, you want us to look to see if there's an opportunity to have more than one. And, and if you, if you agree with that, then no, and I'm not suggesting that there is more than one capable in Columbus of doing what it is the police department and 911 is looking for. It's, they are the user agency sending all of this forward, would be 911 under the Columbus Police Department. And we, we want to hear from them and share with them what the thoughts are, and we need them to be open to whatever. They're the, they're the vendor, they're the agency, internal agency bringing this forward, it's 911 Police.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the fact that we had a bid process that closed out end of last year, and now people involved in the bidding process are being asked to wait another whole year while we proceed on to try to find an answer. It just seems a little unfair to the person bidding.
Well, it's, it's not unusual that we extend an agreement, and extending the agreement actually provides them an opportunity to be prepared to, to do business with us.
Okay. I just thought they had to be prepared to do business at the end of last year in order to bid, so
Well
Maybe I'm missing something.
Yeah, well
I, I work with you, I'm just trying to understand
Well, we're
If, if I was sitting in others' shoes, trying to figure out, it's March, and I won't know anything until December, January.
Well, I don't know, if I was sitting in other shoes, I'd be wanting to do what Isaiah is suggesting.
I mean, yeah, to the point that it's in the control of your shoes, but I mean, I
No, no.
My, I, what, my, my issue is, is I understand what's going on between you, the city manager, and procurement and everyone. I'm just trying to, I need you to help me to understand. It's March, and the council is being asked to move this forward month-to-month for the next nine or 10 months. I just, I just need, I, I, you know, we, we stay out of the process all of the time, except for asking questions. I'm just trying to figure out, how long does it take? Maybe someone can help me with timelines as far as
So, well, I mean, they, we could expedite a process, I mean, we've got
I mean, I'm, I'm going along with, with your process, I'm not trying to change your process, I'm just saying, based on what you said, this will take us the rest of the year?
Well, it would allow our purchasing division to package what we think would be a process that would allow for others to take part. And, and so we, you know, we could send out what we have right now, we can go ahead and do it. I mean, we could send out, but if, you know, if, if we are trying to make sure that we, we look at what we're, deal with Columbus Police Department, first of all, and 911, and present what we believe, and I've had some preliminary discussion with staff, could be an approach that would serve our city well. And, and I hate to get into, to try to share with you all of what
My question is, in dealing with public safety, leading up to December, to the end of the bid, did they have input at that point?
Yeah, it comes from them.
I'm saying, I'm saying we had two, two players in the game, and they had input to that point of what they needed.
Yes.
And then
Everything that you, that was in the specs
Okay.
Came from the police department.
Okay.
And, and then the police department had a very high-ranking person on the evaluation committee. So we processed through purchasing what came forward in the specs and requirements from the police department.
So how many people did we have on the committee?
I don't, look, I, I, I don't know, because I don't get involved in it until
I just asked, I, I saw something in print as something they sent, I just don't remember the number.
And so let me just say this to be clear.
Okay.
I don't know how many people on the committee, I don't know who's on the committee, I don't talk to anybody, I don't, I know it when it gets on my agenda
Right.
Because I stay out of the process.
Okay.
So I want to be clear on that.
Let me, let me ask a question, I guess, the city attorney. It seems to me there's only a couple of options. One, we, we just bring it forward as the way, as the purchasing committee was going to recommend, and let's vote it up or down. Two, we continue on a month-to-month with the present vendor while we revisit this process instead of trying to work it out here, because I don't see that being very productive. And, you know, three, we
Okay. What else?
No, I, I mean, I
I think those are your two options. I think you need to go on and set a time certain, if you're going to extend it, do it 60 days or 90 days and take a vote on that. Otherwise, just go on and put it back out there.
But if we substantially change the scope of the bid by saying we're now accepting two, don't we need to send it back out to everybody?
Well
I want to know legally what we're trying to do.
Yes.
Well, let me just say hypothetically what, what we might consider, and, and of course, this would have this without, I'd like to talk to the police department. They are, hypothetically, I could talk to the police department to see how much of a nightmare it would be for them, Mayor, to have a vendor that would service, that we could have two categories. One vendor could apply or submit for both categories, each vendor could. You may have one vendor to get both categories, and another vendor get one of the two categories, because they are a better fit. This is hypothetical. And so, we've got buses, we've got dump trucks, graballs, all this large equipment, and so, you could have a vendor, one component would be provide city, city towing for heavy equipment, that's 40,000 pounds or greater. And a second component could be anything under 40,000 pounds, which means you'll need a smaller tow truck. And so, one vendor that can do both would apply for both. Another vendor might say, well, I don't have the capacity to do the 40,000 pounds or greater, I don't have a heavy truck, but I could do the smaller vehicles. You could have hypothetically, a component that says, well, that first was city services, hypothetically, you could have a component in the bid that says, they'll respond to traffic accidents, which are typically your smaller vehicles, and they may submit just for that. If you want some diversity in it, I don't know what the police department is going to say, I want to talk to them.
Okay.
But if you've got diversity in it, then you may have something in there for more than one.
Well, please...
If you don't, then there may be only one game in town, I don't know.
Okay.
But if you want it in six days, we'll bring you, and that's why I say if I was in my shoes, I would want to do what Isaiah is talking about.
Okay, I'm good with that, I just need to, I need to understand, I understand it better now, what you're trying to do, okay.
Well, I said hypothetically.
I know, hypothetically.
I don't know what the police department wants.
Well, I, I, my point is that I think the way this is played out, there are going to be questions from a number of different people, and I, I think that the, we either, maybe we do both those options. Maybe we bring the recommendation from the purchasing committee, vote it up or down. If it's voted down, we go back to the month-to-month and we resubmit an RFP, and then we can restructure it however we decide to do it after you talk with the police department. I don't get to vote on it. I'll do, I yield to council whatever makes council feel comfortable. I just think that at this juncture, making sure we do this above board, exactly right, I think is probably the best. And we've got a lot of councillors that want to make a comment. Next is Councilor Woodson.
Yes, Mr. Rickman, thank you for the report, and I'm sorry, I'm a little congested. I only have one concern on, and, and it's the month-to-month, because I'm looking at the people that, that it affects, you know, the families that affect, because it's month-to-month, they don't know if the next month they're going to have a job or not, depending on the contract. I don't know where the month-to-month came, and I don't know, maybe Angelica can tell us, I'm, I'm fine with, you know, doing the year we had to, but I'm uncomfortable with the month-to-month. I think if we suggest, you know, several months and then with a review again, something like that, because I know through my employers and other employers and people out in the community, when your job is getting ready to lay off, when you, and you have a family, you have bills, you have commitment, you know, living month-to-month, wondering if the next month you're going to have a job, you know, not being able to have enough time to prepare. Now, with this going on, I'm pretty sure that the people that are in that employer is now thinking, I better look in the future, because I might not have a job tomorrow. But the month-to-month, to me, it's, it's a little bit uncomfortable, and I say that because I'm, I'm seeing right now where there's layoffs going on, and people don't know, they tap them in the back and say, come to the office, and next thing you know, you don't know where your bread and butter is going to be placed on the table tomorrow. That's the only part I'm concerned about.
If I might address your point, that's why I suggested extend it for a period of time that gives you enough time, particularly if you want to restructure the bids, and if you're going to restructure the way it's going to be bid, you've got to do a new proposal. You cannot go with what you've got now and change the rules in midstream. For one thing, it may be that their pricing might be different if it's shifted around, they might be interested in only one part of the contract as opposed to both, and I don't know how y'all want to structure it, and that's fine, but if you're going to do that, I think you're almost forced to cancel the original bid and then redo the process, and this will require some input from the police department that City Manager Hugh we mentioned. It's also going to require a restructuring of the bid request for, or the proposal request from the purchasing division. So, it, and then there's a time process of going through the review of it and voting again. So, you're going to have to allow several months for that to occur, but I, I certainly don't have any objection to that, and I do...
And, and I don't have any problems with anything you said and recommended. Please don't misunderstand me. My only concern is the month-to-month. I don't know if there's another objection, you know, another recommendation to that, you know, say three months or six months or something like that. So, people have prepared themselves in case their bid doesn't, you know, in case it doesn't pass, you know, then people have time to plan their lives. You're talking about people that have an income, that have children, that's the part I'm worried. All the rest that you said, I'm in agreement with you, I don't care about that. It's the month-to-month I'm worried.
Let me be clear about when we say month-to-month.
Okay, please.
When we say month-to-month through the end of 2019, we are, they are on a month-to-month agreement. They can quit, we can leave them on a month-to-month, but we fully anticipate that if we say through the end of 2019, we're not going to be ready to go with a new agreement until January of 2020. So, there is no need for anyone to be concerned with the month-to-month, that anything's going to happen before the end of 2019. And, and really, you know, based on the company that we're dealing with, you know, I think we all know they're the biggest game in town.
Mm-hmm.
So, where are you going to go? I mean, to be just quite frank with you, who's going to tow a bus, or a big dump truck, or an 18-wheeler? We don't even have to figure that out.
Yeah, I agree with you, I'm just concerned for those, those employees that are watching or listening or wondering what their livelihood is going to be. They don't understand, you know, you come in, you say month-to-month, you know, you're telling me, you know, like you said, the owner can say, hey, forget it, I don't want to do business with the city, forget you, you know, deal with it. You know, the city can say, hey, forget it, deal with it, but I'm talking about people, you know, I'm talking about people being there. That is my, and I want to make that vocal, because I don't want the people there to think nobody cared about them. We got a process, and we got an owner going back and forth, but what about my life? That, that's just my opinion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilor Thomas?
It seems to me that what we should be doing at this point is following our process, whatever that process is, at this point, it has not been changed. And if, in another situation, if the finance department had brought to us a recommendation, and for whatever reason, we didn't accept it, they have a process that they go through to, to move us on. Let's do that, whatever that is. If it's to do a month-to-month, do a month-to-month, if that's your process. But it seems to me that nine months is an awful long time to get a new provider. But you have a process, and didn't you tell us, don't muck around with the process?
Yeah.
So, do whatever it is that you're supposed to be doing, and bring it back to us in the, in the way that you normally do. It just seems to me that, that it's not our responsibility, if you will, or our job at this point, to make changes piecemeal in that process. So, go forth and do your process and bring it back to us, bring it back as quickly as you can, so that everybody is taken care of, the police department's taken care of, the employees are taken care of, the city of Columbus is taken care of, but you've got a process, do it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, that got some lights turned off right there.
Well, Ms. Mayor, in that process will be that I will bring back a month-to-month to ask for an extension through, and we'll work on restructure after, if, if restructure is the direction we'd like to go after talking to the user agency.
Okay. You do what you do.
Yes, sir.
And then, and I think that was put very well. No, Councilor Davis?
Mr. City Manager, are you, are you, it's a little confusing here. Are you saying that you're going to continue month-to-month until we come up with the right option, until this council votes on the right option?
I, I'd like to, for you to, to at least vote on month-to-month, and then we're going to talk to the user agency, and if we're all on board, and then if we can lay out exactly how it will work without any confusion, and they are in agreement with restructuring, then we will move that process forward. And if we're able to work it out by November, we, you know, if that's what you're looking for, I mean, we will, if it's over, I don't know.
This is an annual contract, right? Or is it a multi-year contract?
Multi-year.
And the contract ends when?
It's already, they're already on month-to-month, yes.
So, yeah, I mean, we, the service needs to be provided.
Yes.
Like Councilor Thomas just said, I mean, this is simple, we, it was put out for bid, it went through the procurement process, and once it went through all that, the bid was, in my understanding, awarded, because we were asked to approve it. At that point, we had questions, and that's appropriate. That is totally appropriate, we do it all the time.
Yes.
Questions were, there were a couple of questions. I think those questions got answered, if I'm not mistaken, but we today went through and learned that the, everything was done appropriately, and along with some recommendations. So, I would think that you need to bring back what you brought us before and let us vote it up or down.
That's right.
And then, if you, if, if you decide to go back to the police department...
It's not...
If you want to decide to go back and study a little bit more and come up with another option that's in the best interest of the city, which I would call good business, then let us vote it down or vote it up, whatever, and then we can look at the other option. But if you look at another option, I think you need to put it back out for bid. I mean, that's, that's really...
So, if I, Mr. Mayor, if I bring you the original option, I'm going to be asking you to approve that option.
Okay.
Because the process worked.
And that's, and that's the way...
And that's going to be a single, that's going to be a single company.
That's fine.
And that's it. And then, it'll be a multi-year contract, and we'll do that for the next three or five years or whatever it is, if that's what you want.
Then it's up to this council to vote it up or down. If they vote it down, we'll go back...
If you vote it down...
Then you have a process.
That's right.
That's the process.
I got it.
I think that's what we do.
I'll bring you back at the next meeting.
Good deal.
And I'm assuming all those, I mean, it's my understanding, all those questions that were asked, when it was pulled from the last council, may not have been addressed, am I right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor. I know we've just had a lengthy discussion, but if, and if counsel, Mr. Rickman, is any more questions or any? Thank you, it was obviously a very thorough report, it generated a lot of discussion, so we thank you.
We did.
Thank you for what you do too, John.
Yes, sir, thank you.
We do have, in the, in, just walked in a little late, Lorenzo Torres from Samaritan's Purse, and if y'all would indulge me just 45 seconds, I'd like to bring him up so we could acknowledge him, thank him, and give him just 30 seconds to talk a little bit about what they're doing in our community. Lorenzo, welcome. We went through a lengthy thank you a few minutes ago, so now we'll just say thank you.
Well, I apologize for being late.
No, it's fine.
Just haven't got used to the slow time, fast time thing yet, but, but, you know, Samaritan's Purse has been working in primarily in Lee County since the March 3 tornadoes, and we saw that there was a need here in Muskogee County, primarily here in the city of Columbus. So, we've been sending volunteer teams up here to help clean up some of your neighbors' properties after the tornadoes. So far, since we've been on the ground in Alabama and Georgia, we have taken in 112 work orders, we've completed 36. Here in Muskogee County, we have taken in 31 work orders, and we've completed 11, and we're probably averaging, we've, so far, we've probably averaged about 2,926 volunteer hours here around the city of Columbus, serving your community. And our work does come with a message that God loves you, and God hasn't forgotten you, and that's what we're telling our homeowners that we're serving. So, again, I want to thank y'all.
Lorenzo, thank you, really. On behalf of the consolidated government, the council, and, and the 200,000 people of this community, and particularly the thousands that were impacted by the storm, we're happy to know there's still angels walking around on earth, and a lot of them are wearing orange shirts, so we're, we're very grateful for what you do.
Well, you're welcome.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Mr. City Attorney, it is your agenda.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Got a few zoning items to get through first. First petition up is 2870 Christine Road, I'd like to go from SFR 2 to SFR 3, single family. It's recommended for approval. Mr. Jane is the applicant, is he here?
Is the applicant present?
Okay. I don't see him. Anybody here on this first petition? Christine Road, Mr. Jones, do you...
Doesn't look like it.
All right, well, do you want to continue that? We have in the past when the applicant was not...
Yes, yes, since the applicant's not here, we'll...
We'll continue the first reading. Katrina Chester is the applicant on number two, 825th Avenue, going from general commercial to residential multifamily one, a carport, recommended for approval. Okay, there's no applicant here, Mayor, we'll also...
Is anybody else here to speak against it, or...
Anybody want to be heard on the Katrina Chester petition, carport addition?
Continue that as well.
Okay, we'll just bring the first reading back, Mayor.
Okay.
Next one up is 4621 Springs Road, going from neighborhood commercial, proposed general commercial building and construction trade.
Ms. Blankenship is here.
Donna Blankenship is here. Are there any questions around the table? Does anybody in the audience want to be heard on this? All right, Ms. Blankenship, we'll vote on this in two weeks at a 5:30 meeting, and you can come back then to see the result. Appreciate you being here. Mayor, if we can call item four and six together, these are going to be...
We asked. Excuse me, Mr. City Attorney, apparently there's, Councilor Woodson says that the proponent is here.
Katrina Chester, anybody representing Ms. Chester?
Oh, no, that's the different one. Okay, I got confused.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
We're another one, though.
We'd like to call item four and six up together, since they deal with microbreweries and micro distilleries.
That's the one.
I don't know if Finance Director Ms. Hodge want to comment, but these have been requested with some new definitions that'll go into the zoning of the UDO table of permitted uses, and some new definitions in Chapter 3, the alcohol... uses and some new definitions in Chapter 3, the alcohol code. And Counselor Garrett's our sponsor. Are there any questions about this? All right, Mr. Salido, want to comment? Give him your name and address, please, sir.
Thank you. Good morning. Brian Salido, the address is 1206 Avenue. I am the Executive Vice President of Economic Development at the Columbus Chamber of Commerce and also in that role serve as staff for the Development Authority of Columbus, the board that you've appointed to oversee economic development. We were approached by a prospect who was interested in opening up a brewery in Columbus and in working with the Deputy City Manager's Office and also the Planning Department. We're looking at if zoning was appropriate for the location that this brewery wanted to locate in. And we determined that a text amendment to the UDO would be necessary because that avenue did not exist when the UDO was put forth many years ago. And so in order to allow for a brewery to operate in Columbus, and some of you have visited other breweries in other cities or have at least heard of brewery tourism, if you will, one of the reasons we don't have a brewery in Columbus is we don't have the avenue for it. And so in working with not only Planning Department but also with inspections and codes, we've also worked with business licensure, city attorney's office, obviously under Pam Hodges' purview as well, the city manager, several counselors and the mayor are also aware of this project. We put together this text amendment, this also this business license, alcohol ordinance amendment as well, to allow for the path for this brewery to establish itself in Columbus. In anticipation for any questions that you might have, we also have with us Michael Dennehy this morning. Michael is not only a subject matter expert in this area but also is going to be the proprietor, if you will, of this brewery. And so with that, if there are questions that specifically I can't answer, I will rely on Michael to answer some of your questions as well.
There don't appear to be any. Michael, welcome to Columbus. We're excited to have you create a new business in our community. Oh, we do have something. Hang on just a second. Counselor Thomas.
Mr. Jones, the addition, which one of the use categories is the addition in?
The districts themselves.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
We, are all, all four of the, what we have here before us, are all of those new?
Yes. Yes, ma'am, they are.
So we are creating an entirely new...
Use.
Use, okay.
Yeah. Counselor, we're trying to make sure we accommodate everything at one time here. The particular one, I believe, is going to be in the UPT, the Uptown?
It's actually D.C.
Okay. But I'm saying to you, we want to make sure we accommodate all those now in the proper zone they can actually go into. But we feel like this is not just, not the only one we're going to have. We'll have other requests in the future and we want to make sure we can take care of that.
And we're looking at the Uptown District.
CRD.
CRD is...
Central Riverfront District.
Central Riverfront.
Yes, ma'am.
General Commercial and Light Manufacturing.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, any other questions from the table? Anybody in the audience have a question?
Yes, I'm sorry, hang on. Counselor Woodson.
I just wanted to let my colleagues know that this was brought into my attention because it is in my district. And I went out to the brewery to see what we were talking about because I didn't have a concept of what a brewery was. And when I went, I was very surprised to see the business the way it was. It was so friendly, so family oriented. It was really nice. And there were people there from Columbus and it was funny because they recognized me. The couple called me and said, can I ask you a question? And I said, sure. And they said, are you that lady from Columbus that sit on the council? And I started laughing and I said, yes, I'm trying to keep it low-key. And they started laughing and they said, I hope you guys would do this in Columbus because we travel all over Georgia and this is the best one we've found. And I thought it was so great because people were playing cards and, you know, tasting, everything was clean, it was very, all kinds of signs to make sure no laws were broken. It was very impressive. Of course, that was my first time, you know, going to one. And matter of fact, they even gave me a list of breweries to go to saying, you could see, they're really nice and we really like them and we want one in Columbus. So I just wanted my colleagues to know that they do have a great facility. And then I have to, and Pops, you're going to appreciate this, the brewery is actually owned by a female soldier. And it is the first female soldier in the world to own a brewery. So it's, it was, I was very proud and excited as being a whack and walking in there and seeing all the military, you know, frames and stuff. And I was just like tickled. I was like, can you move to Columbus tomorrow? In my mind. I'm saying it now publicly, but I hope that we can support this. I think it's nice. It's another family oriented place that people can go and play cards and games, have their beer and just enjoy in a nice, beautiful, comfortable... I was really shocked. They even had like living room sets. And I'm sitting there saying to myself, a living room set in a brewery? It was very, an interesting event. So I just wanted to personally and publicly say, I think you and your wife are doing a great job and I hope my colleagues can support it because I would love to see it in my district and in Columbus, Georgia.
Thank you, ma'am. Mayor Protem?
We wouldn't need anything in the ordinance. With the general commercial, that would prohibit certain things on the general commercial.
I don't know. She said under general commercial, is there anything that prohibits any parts of the brewery?
There's nothing in the current general...
Because we'd be creating a brand new...
I know, I know. Sometimes in the past, we had specific zonings. If that didn't go in there, we wouldn't, no, we wouldn't want to prohibit other stuff from coming in there.
Yeah, I'm missing part of the question, ma'am, Protem. My understanding is, is there anything right now that would prohibit somebody from going in and face a general commercial zone? And the answer is yes. I mean, we just, we don't have that mechanism in place today that will allow this business or any other business of this type to go into a general commercial zone. And that's what we're trying to alleviate now that problem so that we do have, now that, now keep in mind, I had to ask the same question yesterday as well. Because it is dealing with alcohol and things of that nature, they still have to meet the alcohol beverage licensing procedure itself. They still got to meet the distance requirements and everything else that goes with that. It's just not automatically allowing them to go into a particular area. They still got to meet those requirements, but for zoning, unless we make this change, they cannot go into a general commercial or any of these other zones without this action.
Okay. What I'm trying to say, I agree with this concept. I'm going to support this. But do we need to put anything in the ordinance that says if they don't do the microbrewery, that they couldn't just sell the property and somebody else come in another commercial, general commercial? And just go in there?
Would there be any unintended consequences if you rezoned it and allowed the brewery in there? If the brewery left, would there be some other more invasive use that could go in? That's what she's asking.
No, I don't, I don't think so. I don't know of anything else that would preclude that right now.
They have to go through the process.
Again, there's still other, I want to emphasize this point, there's still, there's still our regulations and other things, other hurdles they have to overcome. This just basically sets it in motion to allow that particular use in there, but we still have to accommodate that. We still have to monitor it as we go along, I mean, from that standpoint.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
All right. May I ask there any other questions?
Doesn't appear to be anymore.
We'll vote on those two in two weeks at the 5:30 meeting. Thank y'all for being here. Okay, I'll call up item five, Mayor. This is an ordinance amending the UDO so as to amend Article 6 of Chapter 4 pertaining to tree preservation and replacement to add a new paragraph F and add some new definitions. And what specifically what we're adding is definitions of protected tree, beautification planned tree, public protected tree, and exceptional specimen tree. And regulations and violations concerning removal of protected trees.
Any questions?
Trees Columbus Group and others have been very supportive of this effort. Mr. Jones, did y'all have any other comment? Mr. Ganshaw is here, I know from the Laborist Office. Mr. Hinson was here, but he had to leave.
Part of this effort, you may recall, is we had a situation out there on JRL and Parkway where some of the trees were cleared unnecessarily on both sides by, on the roadway side and on the private property side. And it resulted in some litigation that went on from that point. This language is designed to really strengthen that posture so we hopefully don't get into this situation again. But if we do, we have some ways of rectifying it and trying to clean that problem up. We're just trying to protect those areas, particularly these areas that are really more what I call beautification sheds than anything else that really protect the areas and we want to make sure that we don't lose those trees just because somebody decides they want to go out there and clear cut them one day and we have to pay the price for it later on. So this is what the idea behind this language is, is really to strengthen the tree ordinance. The tree board has been very supportive of this. As you said, Trees Columbus is also involved with this and so forth. And we're here to try to answer any other questions you may have about this and what we're trying to achieve.
Any other questions around the table, Mayor Protem?
We're asking no questions.
All right. The City Manager, Mayor Protem, we'll bring this back in two weeks for a final vote. And that covers everything we had, Mayor Protem. Official business, that's all we had listed.
Do you have anything else at the City Attorney? Okay. We're going to our public agenda. Our first public agenda person is this Avis Mama Love Lewis. And she wants to talk about bullying in Columbus senior centers.
My name is Avis. Mama Love. Go to her.
I got time to put on here. Could I go ahead? And I, Mama Love, I also have to say, I know you know new procedures, but you just only have five minutes.
Yes.
Okay. So I have four minutes and 44 seconds.
You're going to take those seconds, right?
Okay, place, Edgewood Community Center. I enter in, I start to take a seat and it said to me, you don't sit there, that's my husband's seat, you don't sit there. Okay, so I go in, get my lunch, I don't sit there. I go to another place, way down to another table, and I eat my food and all of a sudden I see this white lady over me. I tell you, you better not never sit in my seat and you better not sit in my husband's seat either. And she goes on over my head. Okay, one incident. Another incident, Gallup Community Center. I'm cursed out and cursed out and cursed out. Okay, so I stay away a while. I come back and there's a group of people at a table. I paid for my lunch. A young lady didn't pay for lunch, but she's sitting at the table. And all of a sudden she come, go in the kitchen, which she's not supposed to do because she's not a staff member. Okay, then she come back out and she cursed me out in front of everybody and cursed me out and cursed me out. And eventually I said, Vicki, those are all the words, you know? Okay? Okay, Frank Chester, I want to be in an event. And Ms. Joyce tell me, that's my program. I got my people who going to be in that event. Okay? This is not right. We talk about our kids, we talk about them bullying, but old folks are getting bullied too. These are your building, I think, and I told y'all about this last year, but it's still going on. Okay? This is proof, you see, that says a surprising bullying, balaogram, where? Senior center. That states that. You can go and get this article for yourself. Okay, here's another one. I'm not lying. Read it for yourself. Even in the senior houses. There's another one in the senior houses. There's another one. Okay, some people have taken steps to correct this problem. There's a picture showing what other people are doing to correct this problem. Step one. Three. And before my time run out, I want to read this. This not about bullying. Y'all can read it for yourself. I want to read this. You don't have to see me to read this. It's about the people who have had, it's about the people who have had problems. And this goes out to them, telling their family what I think their people who have passed away would say. If you could see me now, you won't shed a tear. Though you may not understand why I'm no longer here, remember my spirit, that, the real me, I'm still very alive. Oh, if you could only see. I behold our Father's face, I touch my Savior hand, the angel, I rejoice as I enter the promised land. Beyond the gates of pearl, I walk a golden streak, I touch the walls of Jasper, dip my foot in the Christal Sea. The beauty is beyond words, nothing can compare. I seen every mansion. Someday I will meet you there. Allow Jesus to be your guide, his words will show you the way. So please don't cry, we will meet again someday. Ms. Patty Deskin. And that's the picture of it, okay? Can you see the picture of it? I want them to see the words. And thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Ms. Lewis, thank you. Thank you for sharing that with us. And I can tell you, we'll pass it along to Ms. Browder of Parks and Recreation.
If you create a committee, could I ask to please be on it? Thank you.
Counselor, Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, and...
Mr. Mayor and members of council, I know that you take her expressions of bullying seriously, and as well I do too. And so I'm going to ask actually the deputy city manager over that area, Lisa Goodwin, to look into each of our senior centers, look at the environment and the allegation of anti-bullying. And I'd really like for her to bring something back to present to you, this body, of the findings. Because we want...
I think it's a great idea. I think any allegation of any improper behavior in any of our facilities, I know our staff takes it extremely seriously, as does this council. So that's a great idea, bring it back.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Keith Mitchell on prison reentry program. Morning, sir. If you would, state your name and your address, and we'll begin the timer when you begin your remarks.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Keith Mitchell. My address is 937 Bunker Hill Road in the 07 zip code, District Three. I'm here representing the Love and Action Prison Reentry Information Support Ministry Program, which is here in Columbus, Georgia. The program is basically designed to work with our returning citizens from incarceration, with our intent is to develop programs and collaboration and networks throughout our city in order to undergird and support those individuals returning back to our community. Love and Action actually is a 501(c)(3) corporation. We meet at Fourth Street Missionary Baptist Church. It's an open community collaborative. And so what we're doing, we're reaching out to any stakeholder that has interest in working with our returning citizens to provide and undergird them with support. We partner with the Georgia Department of Community Supervision. They have a location here, and we're working with what they call the community coordinator. And in those efforts, what we do is developing specific works of programs. One, what we call Stations of Hope. Stations of Hope is a faith-based level initiative where faith programs can actually provide resources to individuals returning back to our community. And those resources can be anything from clothes, fooding, bus passes, or any type of support. And the way that program is designed is entities are identified as Stations of Hope. They actually have a seal that you can put on your establishment, and then we create a listing of those particular programs that we can send individuals to. The other one is the mentoring component. We are actually now trying to reach out to individuals in our community to serve as mentors, again, to undergird and support individuals as they navigate back to our community. The supervision community has another distinct program, which is, as we've learned, is that housing becomes the critical moment when people try to come back into their communities. If they don't have adequate housing, at times, they have to serve their time in prison. And so there is a component associated with our program that actually helps to develop and work with individuals to provide adequate housing. Some key things I just wanted to, before my time is up, make you aware of is just some key upcoming dates as associates with Love and Action Prison Reentry Program. We have a monthly meeting every second Thursday of the month at 6 o'clock at Fourth Street Baptist Church, with a meeting coming up this Thursday. And what we're doing really is trying to reach out and recruit stakeholders throughout our community that may, again, be interested in undergirding our citizens as they return. And again, that's 6:00 PM this Thursday at Fourth Street. Then there is a mentoring gathering on the 18th of March of this month, 5:30 PM at Christ Community Center. That effort is to really reach out and to recruit individuals that may be interested, male or female, to, again, come on and become mentors for individuals returning to our community. And the last thing I want to share with you as a key date is what happened on April the 12th at 6:00 PM at Fourth Street. We will be providing a training for those entities that are interested in becoming Stations of Hope, as well as individuals that are interested in mentoring. And so I just want to share this information with City Council, that we have a process in our community, work with those individuals returning back into our community, and provide them the adequate resources. Contacts for this particular program is myself, Keith Mitchell. My cell number, 706-566-1084. Email, mitchelkeith04@gmail.com. And Dr. Michael Forte, his cell number is 706-566-8635, with his email is mr.forte@all.com. Thank you for your time.
Terrific. Well, thank you for your work. Counselor Barnes?
Keith, I'd just like to thank you and Dr. Forte and Dwight for being involved. And to let the community know, this is an initiative that was started by Governor Deal.
That's correct.
And it's going to, what I like is the fact that anyone can call you, Keith, and get involved in this program, because this program is needed. When individuals pay their debt to society, then we, as a community, need to help them integrate back into society. So please give your number again.
Okay, yes, sir.
Your contact information.
My number is 706-566-1084.
And I'd like to also say that there is going to be, in line with this, it's called Let Us Make Man, on April the 27th at CSU, and we'll get the location at CSU. This is a program to help African-American males. As everyone knows, you can read the newspapers, we need to, as a community, help all individuals. But African-American males are experiencing a very difficult time. And Keith and Dwight and Dr. Forte and myself are involved in this. Calvin Smyrie is the point of contact for this program. Also, Columbus Mentoring, which Keith is and Dr. Forte and Dwight and I are involved in. Governor Deal, this is going to end up to be a huge legacy for him, Mr. Mayor, because he started this program for, to help incarcerated individuals, as well as the Reed Scholarship Program for disadvantaged youth, huge, both huge programs. So everyone, please get involved, no matter what your stage is, no matter what your occupation, every individual can get involved in this initiative. And I want to thank you, Keith, again, for coming out, and for speak, Missionary Baptist Church, for their involvement in this initiative.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Mitchell, I know your time is up, but as you're going to your seat, I want to let you know that criminal activity is a big push for the mayor's office. And the two areas that we're really focusing on is young people and recidivism. And to that end, Counselor House has been involved with a group that has been meeting to discuss ways to have an impact and ease the reentry of released felons. And we, at his request, we're going to create an initial meeting for a mayor's commission on reentry. And so we'll be contacting you. And we would love for you to be a part of that initial meeting, just so we can kind of get the lay of the land, make sure we understand what the resources are. But thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you. And you mentioned representing House, because Andrea Reese is our community coordinator. She didn't share with me that she's working with you.
Great. And we'll reach out to you for that initial meeting. Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right. Next is Mr. Robert E. Norkowski, asking to consider increasing the number of days allowed before paying a parking ticket. Is Mr. Norkowski here? All right. Mr. Mike Jones, asking to, for a 13th Street Bridge closure in connection with Creative South fireworks display on April 11th.
Thank you, guys.
Good morning, Mike.
Good morning. Thank you, guys, so much for having me. It's a privilege to be here just to chat with you guys. I'm sorry, I'm trying to figure this out. How many people, real quick, how many people know what Creative South is, have ever heard of it? Show of hands? Very few. Okay, so I'm going to just give you a quick rundown of what Creative South is. In 2011, I started a conference here for creatives. That's what I do for a living. I'm the head of design at Aflac, and also I run a studio here in town called Service Studios. I've been a graphic designer for about 18 years. And what I want to do is create a better community around design and creativity. So what I did is I started a conference in 2011. We had 45 attendees and two speakers that year. Fast forward, we're about to celebrate our ninth year this year, but last year, we had over 1,000 people here from all over the country. About, yeah, a little over 1,000 attendees. Thirty-five states, 11 different countries showed up, and we actually were named one of the top 20 conferences to attend by creators by Forbes Magazine. So can, how does this work? Sorry. If I want to go to the next one? Oh, there's a click. I'm in it. All right, here we go. Cool. There's about us. All right. Anyway, the whole point of our conference is to bring folks here to inspire, engage in Southern hospitality, and when they leave here, to take the people that they made friends with here, make them family, and go out and do bigger and better things in the design community. The thing that I've noticed is that these folks are returning. They're always talking about how awesome Columbus is. And so they're always coming back. And we've just fostered this awesome creative community. That's kind of what 2015 looked like at a glance, just to kind of show you how many people it is. We have this thing at the Springer every year. But here's the numbers, you know? Thirty-five state from last year, over 1,000 attendees, 35 states visited, 11 countries. I had a guy from Beijing, China, show up, flew from Beijing to Columbus. It's four days long now. The average spend in our, per person is around $232 a person per day. We'll look at the number, and it's kind of injected on the slide, but look at, you know, what does that look like in revenue? That's the high end. Maybe on the low end, it's around $750. So anywhere from $750,000 and over $900,000 is coming in for four days for the city of Columbus. So I wish I had time to show you guys this video, but this is our growth plan for the next couple, for the next year and for 2020. We're going to, right now, currently, we're hitting our goal, trying to hit our goal around 850 to 900 people. And then next year, I want to double it. I'm going to move it from the Springer to the River Center, and I want to grow. The point of this conference is to help Columbus become the creative hub of the South. And we're well on our way. So my ask, I know it's a big one. We have a bridge party every year that kicks off the conference, where all of our attendees, all of our speakers, our friends, our family, all of our VIPs come to this bridge, the 14th Street Bridge. We close it down, and we have a party on that bridge. It's our kickoff, it's our celebration to start this creative week here. And we have had fireworks in the past. But because of construction and everything else that's going on now, which is awesome stuff, it's been harder and harder and harder to find a place to shoot these fireworks from. And these fireworks help make this party amazing. So our ask is to close the 13th Street Bridge on April the 11th, which is a Thursday night, from 7:30 to 10:30. And the timeline, which it shows on the papers you guys got, is, you know, 4:00 PM, Power Technico, which, by the way, is the vendor that we use every year. They've actually done fireworks at the State University of Columbus. They've done the Cotton Mouse, T-Sus, City of Phoenix City, us, different events. Anyway, we have chatted with them, and we talked about the safety issue of shooting these fireworks on the bridge. We have actually in them, on the map, carved off 250 square foot radius for safety to be able to shoot these towards the 14th Street Bridge. But they'll set up at 7:30. At 9:50, the fireworks will start. At 10 o'clock, they'll be done. By 10:15, they'll be off the bridge. And I know it seems like a long period of time to close a bridge on a Thursday night, but you guys have closed the bridge much longer time periods for parades and everything else. So I'd love to make this happen. Like I said, five minutes is really not enough to showcase what Creative South is really doing. But I do appreciate your time and consideration in this matter, and I'd love to make it a reality.
Any questions? We've got, yeah, we've got a couple of counselors. Counselor Thomas?
Mr. Jones, I am aware of Creative South. I have kept up with you for several years, and you're doing a tremendous job.
Thank you.
Is this, is this something that the public safety folks need to be involved in making this decision? I think anytime we do a street closure, that's part of the process. But I would like for us to do whatever we can, given some of those constrictions, to make sure that these folks have this opportunity to showcase our city. You skipped over the number of hugs that were given.
Most of those are given out by me. What are you going to do? Yeah, yeah. Over 1,000 hugs given, guilty. Yeah, I'm always hugging necks and breaking bread.
I hate to do this, but in an effort to remain consistent, Mr. Jones, I'm going to have to ask you to take your seat. The council can continue to discuss these items, and if you want to add anything, you're welcome to come back for another three minutes at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
That's been the process.
I'll share all the video then.
I will, yeah. And I will say that after speaking with Mr. Jones, I was a little bit aware of Creative South, had no idea how it had grown. And this is not just a somebody's backyard barbecue, trying to close a bridge for the day. This is about over 1,000 people, and probably within the next couple of years, it'll grow to over 2,000. It's become globally renowned in the world of design, and it brings a lot of notoriety to the community. I'm not advocating for it, because my biggest concern was the safety factor.
So if we can get him in touch with whomever...
He has made the request, and my understanding is that it's been denied. It has been, or it has been recommended that it not be approved from staff, I think is where we are.
From staff or from public safety?
Well, I think public safety's been part of the evaluation process, have they not? Maybe I spoke too soon.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know that public safety has taken a position on it, but certainly the staff have concerns about, as you indicated, it's a great event, and we support it. We'll do whatever we need to do to help support it, but we do have concerns about closing the 13th Street Bridge on a Thursday night from the 7:30 to 10 o'clock timeframe for various reasons. And you mentioned one is that it's a great event, and it will potentially have 1,000 people or so, and will continue to grow, and you'll continue to want to do fireworks, I'm sure, from that same location as it grows. But we do have some concerns, and certainly we want to hear from the police department about any concerns that they have as well.
Well, we have closed the 13th Street Bridge before. I'm thinking about the movie that was made on 13th Street. I'm not sure what time of the day or night that was, but I would, I would ask that the staff revisit this and give them every consideration that you can. I'm not asking you to change your position, but just let's revisit it and make sure that this million dollars that we're looking at, potential, that if it's there, we can do something. I just make that request.
And we'll certainly do that in coordination and conjunction with the Columbus Police Department. Certainly if they feel that it's something that they are comfortable with, you know, we'll, their public safety will yield to that. But the position as it stands right now, no. And yes, we did it for the movie Fast and Fury, and we've done it on Saturday mornings, war parades. So it has been done. I don't know what traffic is like down there on a Thursday night, but certainly we'll take a look, because we support it as much as anyone around the table or in the community. We think it's good for Columbus, so certainly we'll give it our best look.
Just take another look, and let's see if there's not something we can do to help these folks out.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Woodson?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Jones, thank you very much. I didn't know about your event, but I've already took a picture of it and sent it to my group. I can tell you, too, if staff can check, because I know the Tri-City Latino Festival, when we tried to have fireworks on our fifth anniversary, it became very intense, I'm going to put it that way, because all the legal terms and all the restrictions and things like that. But we were able to find another site. It's still, you know, it wasn't where we wanted it, but it was still, we were able to do the fireworks. I'm hoping that we can do it on 13th. But if we couldn't, we, I would suggest you try a different site that would benefit you. We had to do that. We had to find another site. And it worked. I didn't think so. I was upset, and I didn't think it would work, but at the end of the day, it did. And the firework individuals that you hire are very professional, because they really helped us out a lot, and they were the one that convinced us to look at an alternative site, and we were able to have the fireworks. But myself and my board, we will be there, because I see you have here and festival events. So we're a growing festival. We're going into our seventh year. Our first time, we had 3,000 people in the rain. We are now to about 9,000 to 10,000 people that come to the Civic Center one day to celebrate the Latino... that come to the Civic Center one day to celebrate the Latino culture. And like you, we have people that come from Miami, South Carolina, Pennsylvania. We got people that wait to come visit their family from Panama and Puerto Rico for that day, and then they come that weekend. So I look forward to coming out and, and seeing your event, and maybe you could teach me something new.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Counselor House?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a fast question to make sure I understand the scope of the whole event. This is the first of four days? Is that correct?
This is our kickoff night, yes, sir. So that day, earlier that day, we have workshops all day at Troy.
Okay.
And then that night is our kickoff. All the attendees are there, and that's when we kind of kick it off.
Okay, and it'll end on the 14th, the overall event?
It'll end on Sunday, yes, sir.
Okay, all right. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor, Mayor Pro Tem, I'm sorry.
I would just like to offer a motion of support in favor of this project.
Okay. Is that a motion to close 13th? Or is that, okay. There's a motion made to approve the closure. There's a second. Any, any discussion to the motion?
And I know you have to go through all the stuff, you have to go through the closing. I want the staff to know that we support the closing.
Okay, so this is, this is to support the closing, not to, not to close it?
Right.
Okay, I misstated. The motion and the second was to voice support for closing the, the 13th Street Bridge for those few hours, pending the approval, I guess, of staff and public safety.
I, I don't have any comp.
Okay. Well, let's, well, let's, let's, we'll call the vote. There's a motion, second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. We need a hand vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. One, two, four? Is that correct? Okay. All those against, please show the same sign. Votes?
Four. Somebody has voted.
Inconclusive.
Oh, Bruce is not there.
Let's just follow the right protocol.
We, uh...
It's on the right protocol.
It, it's...
There is a right question.
All right, hold on, hold on, hold on. Let's, where we are is we have an inconclusive vote, and the vote was, as stated, was to voice support for this
That's it.
...closure. And, and it was to, I think it...
Not to approve.
That's right. I, I don't want to, I don't want to speak for the Mayor Pro Tem, but it sounded to me like it was simply to try to let the staff know that this is what we would like to see happen if it will satisfy the requirements of staff and public safety. Counselor Davis?
Yeah, no, look, I'm, I'm totally 100% in, in support of this effort, okay? I want y'all to know that. What I'm not in support of is, I don't think we've ever voted as a body to tell staff what to do. I, I have a problem with that. I'm not comfortable with it. I think it needs to go through the process. We talked about that earlier. But if we're voting to influence the staff to tell them what to do, now, I'm just, I'm a little uncomfortable without hearing from, without hearing from everybody. I don't know what the issues are. I, I want to support this. Let me, I mean, I'm saying it to everybody, but I don't know what the issues are here. And, you know, I'd like to have all that on, on the table. And if, if there was another alternative site, that would be great. Make it happen, that would be great. I don't know what's going on. Usually where the fireworks are usually off of Gillingham, yeah, maybe the amphitheater, and...
And I, I think, I think the issue for them is that's kind of far away. But, but I will say this. I think, as Counselor Allen has pointed out, I think there's consensus that we want to see the project move forward if possible, but we also want to leave it in the hands of the city manager. So since the vote was inconclusive, why don't we just look at this as a consent, a, a, an assurance through consensus that council would like to see this happen if it meets the requirements of staff and public safety? Would that suffice, Mayor Pro Tem?
Okay. Okay. Can you verbalize that again, for me?
Yeah, it's, the, the, the consent of, the consensus of council is that we would like to see this happen on the 13th Street Bridge if it falls into the guidelines of the administrative review and the public safety review. Okay? And, and so we don't need a vote. I think we just, if...
So that's given, that's included in consideration, what Glenn's concerned, that we respect the staff's research and opinion.
Correct. Correct. The city manager, you clear on that?
Yes, sir.
I assure you that we're gonna do everything in our power to work with this group.
All right.
We support what they're doing.
Thank you.
I got the message.
Gentlemen, thank you so much. And like I said, if you want to stick around and speak at the end of the meeting, you're more than welcome to.
Yeah, we'll look for that video.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, on the public agenda, is Ms. Audrey Holston-Palmore. Ms. Palmore, while you're coming to the podium, let me publicly apologize. I have your information, and I did not call you. So I will call you, I promise.
Between 9:00 and 10:00.
Yes, ma'am, you were very clear.
Any, any morning. I've been waiting.
All right, state your name and your, your address.
Yes, my name is Audrey Holston-Palmore, and I am a resident of Columbus, Georgia, born and raised. I retired at 10:35, Lawyer's Lane. On March the 7th, I did the appropriate requirement and signed up for public agenda for the purpose of learning information about the risk management program. On February the 14th, I was, provided the opportunity, as I had requested since April 2018, to meet with the city manager concerning my issue of negligence of the Division of Columbus Parks and Recreation, not providing an open space as was contracted by my daughter to have facilities for guests to have, for release at a, at, at a Columbus Park, which is operated by the Columbus Parks, I mean, yeah, which is operated by the Division of Parks and Rec. And at that particular meeting, which I had requested since April 2018 with the city manager concerning the negligence, the, the, the idea of risk management was brought to the meeting. And I did not understand what risk management that he was referring to, the city manager, Isaiah Hugley. So I'm here to find out about the step of risk management in, in reference to my concern as a private citizen to have denial of what I had made a request for compensation because of the negligence. And I told him that I, in writing, that I did not accept the, I have it in writing, that I told him that I did not accept the denial. And so I'm here to find out because what risk management is before the step of going to court. I'm thinking that risk management is like a go-between, citizen concerned about receiving compensation, and the city manager stating that there will not be denying the citizen compensation because of the negligence. So that's, that's why I want to know. Is risk management involved since on the 14th of February, I told the city manager that I did not accept the denial? So at this, and I put it in writing, that I did not accept the denial. So I want to know, you know, where, where this situation stands as far as the risk management division is concerned.
Well, Mr. Palmore, if you have...
I'm addressing this to the city manager.
Yes, ma'am. But unfortunately, during the public agenda, you and I will communicate. And really, what I was gonna ask you to do is if you have other concerns or questions, go ahead and, and express those.
Well, you, you...
And that way, we'll address all of them at one time.
Okay, you initially have spoken with me and told me that you will be giving me the telephone call.
Between 9:00 and 10:00.
Between 9:00 and 10:00. And you told me it was going to take about a week, but we all know that it's extended.
That's right.
And so that's why I came before the agenda, I mean, before, on public agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
Because...
And I will call you. You're right. And I apologize. I, I did, I gathered the information, but I haven't called you yet. I will.
Okay, it was becoming a matter of integrity, but now that you've publicly announced that you will let me know through the telephone...
Thank you for letting my integrity off the hook.
Okay. Well, I'm interested in the pub, the risk management division. I, I don't understand how that, what he brought up, has anything to do with, you know, denying my request for compensation based on the negligence that was done.
Yes, ma'am. And as you finish your remarks, what we'll do is we'll ask the city manager to explain what the risk management department does.
Okay.
Okay?
That's fine.
Are you finished with your remarks?
Well, I can guess, because that was part, what you
Okay.
Initially brought up was a part of my presentation.
All right. Well, great. You've got about 18 seconds left, if you want to say anything else.
Yeah, right. I understand.
Okay.
So I'm just, you know, very interested in resolving the issue in the proper manner.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's why I have to keep coming.
I got you. And thank you for, thank you for appearing.
Okay.
And you can go ahead and take your seat, and I'll let the city manager mention to you what the risk management...
Mr. Mayor, I, I did meet with Ms. Palmore on February 14th, and she did raise a question or issue that we had with her daughter. Her daughter made application for use of a Parks and Rec facility, and then a restroom was out of service at the park. However, they still had their birthday party at the park. Her daughter came to see me, and I reimbursed her, her cost for use of the park and provided her, her daughter a letter allowing for use of another Parks and Rec facility, not necessarily that one, but any one of her choice, within one year, at no cost to her daughter. And Ms. Palmore has been following up regarding her adult daughter's application and my reimbursement and my offer to her daughter in a letter to use a, a facility over the next year. I did meet with her and, and told her I really would prefer talking to her daughter who filed the application, and, and the issue was with her daughter. And Ms. Palmore got into a conversation about compensation for alleged negligence and going to court, she indicated, regarding the out-of-service restroom that was due to vandalism. Though I'd already closed that issue out with her daughter with what I've already mentioned. And so because she alleged negligence and wanted compensation and talked about going to court for a loss that she has not incurred, I referred it to risk management. And of course, risk management handles all claims against the city where there is damage to private citizens, and they feel like they've lost something. Risk management will take whatever the claim is, investigate the claim, and render a decision on behalf of the city regarding the claim. I told her I would turn that claim over to risk management, that she feels she was due compensation. I turned it over to risk management, and risk management has been involved with it from there.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. All right, that's, that's it for the public agenda. So Mr. City Manager, we'll move into your agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a few items on my agenda. The first item I have on my agenda is the fiscal year 2020 holiday schedule. And we are requesting you, the council, to approve the holiday schedule for the fiscal year 2020 budget year. And it is recommended that the floating holiday be December 26th, which is the day after Christmas versus the day before Christmas.
All right, there's a motion of approval, a motion and a second to approve the FY20 holiday schedule. Any discussion? Bruce, can you cue the vote? Please register your votes. Green for red, or green for yes, red for no. That passes.
Next item I have is a street acceptance. A portion of Woodville Court Engineering has looked at the street. It's been improved, and they recommend acceptance.
Second. Motion of approval, a motion to approve and a second for street acceptance. Any discussion? All right, please cue it. Please register your votes. And that passes.
Mayor, I've got the next two items would be grants. I've got a family drug court grant. It's $300,000, a 10% cash match, and the cash, cash match is available through the public defender.
Second. Motion, second, approve the family drug court grant. Any...
Would you go over the...
Yeah, yes. The city is required to do a 10% cash match, and it will be available through the public defender and guardian at litum allocations in the juvenile court department budget. So they've got money in their budget for guardian at litum, through the guardian at litum allocations. And that's where the cash match will come from.
Okay. All right, there is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Please cue the vote. Please register your votes. That passes.
I've got another grant of $300,000 or the amount that's approved, and it's a request through the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council for operations of the juvenile drug court.
Motion and a second to approve. I guess some of the discussion would be where that match is coming from as well.
And the cash match is available through case management salary allocations. And so these allocations are already there, and you're funding it, and so they use that as their cash match. It's not new money. It's money that was already allocated anyway.
Okay. Motion, second. Any other discussion? Please cue it. Please register your votes. Still one missing. There we go. Passes unanimously.
And so next, I've got the Georgia Emergency Management Agency Homeland Security Grant, MOU, and agreement is required in order to apply for grants from the Georgia Emergency Management Homeland Security Agency.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem.
Second.
And we've got a second. Any further discussion? Please cue it. Please register your votes, councilors. That passes unanimously.
Got purchases, got some vehicles. The first one is an inmate cargo van from Hardy Chevrolet. It's $30,208 for MCP, Muskogee County Prison, asking your approval.
Approved, approved. Second.
Motion, second, approve A. Any discussion?
Mayor, I'd like to substitute motion to approve A through J. No one has objection.
Second.
All right, there's a substitute motion to approve all the purchases, A through J, subject to the city manager running through them. Any discussion, or anybody want one of these pulled for, for further discussion?
Um...
All right, Mr. City Manager, why don't you run through very quickly what each one of them is, and we'll take the vote.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, the B item is a service truck that will be used by Metro's Maintenance Division for road calls on disabled vehicles, and it's $28,451. C, animal control truck. We've got truck, cab, and chassis from Wade Forward and unit price of $24,087, and one animal control truck body, $28,490, total cost $52,577. And it's for animal control. D is electric motor repair service. It's $40,000 per fiscal year, obviously on an as-needed basis. E is hot asphalt and general road repair services. It's $318,733,051. And it's on an as-needed basis for public works and engineering as it relates to hot asphalt and general road repair services. F, I've got swim gear. It's for Parks and Rec on an as-needed basis. It's $28,451. F, I've got swim gear, uh, it's for parts and rec on an as-needed basis, it's twenty-six thousand, six hundred, uh, five dollars and twenty-five cents. G, folding chairs with storage carts for the civic center from time to time, the chairs wear out, and, uh, it's thirty-three thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars. Repair service for hydraulic loader, it's twenty thousand, three eighty-three, twenty-seven to repair that piece of equipment. Repair service for a new flyer, it's a thirty-five foot bus, twelve thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars, and repair of a Gillick, uh, thirty-five foot bus, fourteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty-nine cents. Uh, those are the purchases, uh, Mr. Mayor.
All right, uh, we've already had a motion and a second, so please cue for the councilors to vote, councilors, please, please register your votes. And purchases pass unanimously.
Mayor, I've got a few updates, I've got Mr. Gary Jones here from, uh, the Chamber of Commerce, uh, he is Executive Vice President of Military Affairs, he is going to come and provide counsel, the mayor and council with an update on military affairs, uh, Mr. Gary Jones.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Protem, uh, Mr. City Manager, Madam, uh, Clerk of Council, and Mr. City Attorney, I thank you for this opportunity to bring you up on, uh, Fort Benning, and the good news is, Fort Benning is hiring, so that's good news. When we look at it from a macro perspective, we see that defense is about a twenty billion dollar a year industry, when you look at the major defense contractors there in Georgia, we're pleased that nine of the ten are right here in our area, the only one not there is a shipbuilding company. Going from a macro, let's take it down, the bottom line is, Fort Benning is big, it's two hundred and eighty-five square miles, and what you see there is the Atlanta MSA placed on top of, uh, the reservation of Fort Benning. It's, uh, now to manage this large area here is obviously involves much more than just Columbus, you'll see the region that we work with, Marion, Talbot, over in the Russell County, and Casita and so forth, as we work with this, we're focused on one thing, and that's the bottom line is, today really should be entitled probably Economic Development Update. Fort Benning is an economic development project of four point eight billion dollars and forty-two thousand workers, and we are focused on that because we're going to make sure that project stays in great step. It also supports about a hundred and twenty thousand people, when you look at the retirees, Department of Defense civilians, and family members in, in the region as a whole. Now, we're able to do that because we focus on two things, and when I say we, we focus on this, on, on your behalf, and we're, we're looking at supporting mission growth, and the next thing is, we support and we focus on BRAC preparation. We sat down with Fort Benning, and these are the four major categories that we must focus on to make sure Benning remains competitive for mission growth and also for BRAC preparation. It should be noted, the last time we were evaluated on well-being and quality of life, it just blew it off the scale, everything else was great. Where I focus a great deal is on power projection, you'll see there on the left with airspace, airfield operations, focusing on mission growth and, uh, making sure the training land, what we can do to help with the training land, the issue is not more training land, but the issue is quality of that training land. Here are some of the things that we're involved with, and some of the things that have come into Fort Benning, the biggest thing that stands out there is that it shows that we're working with other partners, that you'll have the Cameron Partnership in, uh, King, at Kings Bay Submarine Base, we worked with Twenty-First Century at Robbins, we worked with the Gordon Alliance, we always exchanging information also with the Georgia Chamber of Commerce. When we say we'll support the commanding general's power projection and training requirements, these are the dollars that have come in there. And you may ask yourself, well, what's the big deal about providing this money for the Rangers is out there? I will assure you, Central Command at Fort Bragg would love to take the Seventy-Fifth Ranger Regiment, and would love to take the Third Battalion Seventy-Fifth and move it to Fort Bragg, and move it to Central and to Special Operations Command, and you can rest assured, people are after those assets, they're building up cases all the time, and we make sure that by working with our, working with you, with our state delegation, and with our state delegation in Washington, we, we go and, through their efforts, through NEDC, the National Defense Authorization, uh, act, that they actually go, and we have monies that they're placing, especially from the Senate Armed Services Committee and the House Armed Services Committee, that in fact have monies there that if the military comes up with a unfinance requirement, those monies are there. As a result, we've been very, very successful to date, you see where drone hangars are going in with the Seventy-Fifth. This is a phenomenal level of not only weapon systems, but intelligence gathering systems and information data flow. And then, in addition to that, we're very proud of the airfield tower that, uh, we're able to, uh, through the military team, we're able to come up with that ten point eight million dollars to have a new airfield, airfield control tower out there, and we, specific thanks go to Congress and Bishop, Senator Isaacs and Senator Perdue for the great role they played there. Now, there's a new effort coming up out there, uh, the military focused for years and years on what we're doing in Iraq and what we're doing in Afghanistan, and during that time, our, our adversaries have been going and have been studying our doctrine, updating their equipment, and all of a sudden, we, the Army, realized, we need to have to refocus our training because we're not necessarily, we always want to fight city to city, we may have to fight across the broad plains of, of Europe again. So as a result, they've completely reworked the requirements for the armor program of instruction. To do that is going to require some efforts, uh, and their environmental impact statement's being done, and they're looking at three options that range from four thousand acres to over thirty-seven hundred acres to twenty-three hundred acres, none of which will require additional purchase of land, it's all within available assets there. But, working with Fort Benning and working with a delegation in Washington, we already know that the cost is probably going to be thirty point two, up to thirty-four million dollars. Now, that'll be a year or so down the road, all indicators are, that money will be supported, we're just working very closely with our Georgia delegation in Georgia as well as in Washington to make sure those monies will be set aside from the, from the Senate Armed Services Committee and the House Armed Services Committee. Here's some good news, Fort Benning is growing, we all, I was, I mentioned to the mayor one time, we were looked at twice during a drawdown of about, initially about a hundred and twenty thousand people. When the military drew down eighty thousand, we presented our case to the Department of Army Team, and result is, we kept the Third Brigade, and in fact, Benning actually grew during that process. Then they came back and said, we're cutting another forty thousand. At that point, they weren't cutting into fat anymore, they, they were cutting into bone and muscle. And through the efforts, specific efforts of, of Senators Isaacs and Senator Bishop and Congressman, uh, Senator Perdue and Congressman Bishop, they met with the Secretary of the Army, and we were flat-told by senior executive services and officers in positions of significant responsibility. I received calls, and I quote, "Don't burn up any more brain cells, the Third Brigade is gone." Well, we met with the commanding general at Fort Benning and said, "Tell us why this is important," and then we made sure our delegation knew the facts, not go by opinion, not go by emotion, but go by facts. End result is, they relooked it, and we ended up keeping the First Battalion Twenty-Eighth Infantry, a thousand and fifty people. Basically, we kept ninety-three million dollars a year, and once you look at family members, and both the spouses and the children, we kept almost thirty-six hundred people here in this region. When the Army drew down by that hundred and twenty thousand, we initially were scheduled to lose about twenty, thirty-four hundred, it came down to twenty-four hundred or just two percent, that is a phenomenal success story in itself. And this isn't just what the, the military team, because there are members of this council directly involved in this process. Now, the good news is, that when all of a sudden that brigade was, elements that brigade was leaving, we found that when the brigade, the one thing that came out of it positive for me personally was, when all of a sudden the brigade was staying, and they said, who's responsible, I was standing behind a whole bunch of people. When all of a sudden the elements of that brigade left, you know, there wasn't anybody in front of me or behind me. The good news is, I found out who's responsible from military affairs, and it didn't take, it was three people working it, me, myself, and I, but it's the team that's working it. I have that honor to, to be involved with it. The bottom line is, when you look at this growth that's occurring, and F, and you'll see there, the three battalions are coming in in FY twenty, actually, the Third Battalion, uh, fifty, Forty-seventh was just activated, and those other battalions are being, and the one station unit training that's gone from sixteen weeks to twenty-two weeks for both armor and infantry. The growth we see there in full-time positions, by the early part of next year, we will have negated the losses that we experienced from elements of the Third Brigade. And Benning is doing that because those things that we talked about right here, those four things there, we focused on, and getting those dollars here made it so these things would happen. It's not an accident, it's all a matter of a very clear, distinct plan. Also, the training base is growing out there, you can see where in seventeen, it grew by a little over seven thousand, and in eighteen, they're going to go by fourteen thousand. The military, the Army was going to go, uh, to seven hundred and ninety-six by the end of this year, it'll be seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand, but after that, they'll grow about two thousand a year versus four thousand a year. But when I do that, then I say, okay, we focused on mission growth, but we're able to have the mission growth because we're also doing parallel efforts for BRAC preparation. And here is the, the presentation that we laid out to Senator Perdue's, uh, State Military Advisory Group, and laid it out also to Congressman Bishop, and have laid it out to the Georgia Chamber of Commerce, and I will tell you, that's the gold standard, because no one, people will say, "Gary, if you have the next BRAC in twenty-three, cool your jets, why are you so excited, we've got time?" Because if you understand Department of Defense, in October of twenty, they asked for the data call, that means you had to have everything ready and in position for October twenty. That's the reason we keep the pressure on, to keep making sure that we have those ranges the way they're supposed to be, the maneuver area where it's supposed to be, the facilities are able to support that, because Fort Benning is also a power projection platform, that means it can railload, uh, a unit out, as well as the Air, Army Airfield has a requirement to move elements of the Seventy-Fifth Rangers and others out in an eighteen-hour wheels-up notice. But the bottom, many people don't realize, the BRAC process is once the commission receives the BRAC list, and I want to say that again, receives the BRAC list, because Department of Defense creates the BRAC list, then the commission goes through there and says, do we leave it like it is, or do we change it? Eighty-five percent of that information remains as is, so the key thing is, don't get on that list first to start, and that's why we're pushing everything out at the, at the front edge on that. Here are things that we're involved with or are continuing to grow, the, the MO robotics, we're very actively involved with a, a Senator Perdue State Military Advisory Group, in fact, uh, uh, Mayor Anderson attended the meeting that we're at, and I believe it was eye-opening when you saw each of the entities, planning entities for the state, when they came in there, we were prepared, and we came in with specifics, and we came in with requirements, and we're very, very pleased with our, with our planning effort. We're also, Georgia's just created a joint defense commission, and we're, uh, wanting to be an active part of that. Some targets we're going after, there's a joint interagency task force, it's actually a Coast Guard Command, is commanded by a two-star Coast Guard, one-star Navy, full Colonel, uh, Air Force Chief of Staff, obviously dealing a lot with interdiction in the Gulf, they're in the process of moving from Florida. We're, uh, we're about to get our second visit, and, uh, and the reason I say, we're about to get our second visit, is they had the first visit, they're coming back for the second visit at Benning, and we've said, we'd love to host a reception or something for this evaluation team when they come in, so they get a flavor of support from the community in the region toward them. Another thing that we're obviously, is very, very important, is robotics, and one of robotics is that involves Columbus State University and so forth, we're, uh, uh, Mr. Jones from, uh, the Planning Department was also with us when we met to work on Autonomous Vehicle Study Group, that we're competing and working, uh, for that entity at the same time, a big conference coming up, the National Defense Industrial Association, another, what robotics modular emission payload assessment, I defy anybody to look at that and figure out what I'm talking about, they're talking about a platform, a vehicle, they'll do anything from carry payloads to go carry weapon system, imagine a mobile ground, uh, system there, and the biggest thing we're going after now is, we're trying to get created, here in Columbus, a Georgia Center of Innovation, now you say, what is a Center of Innovation? This is basically what it is, there's about, uh, five of them that exist now, that range from aerospace down to logistics, manufacturing, and so forth, and we're trying to create the sixth, and that sixth is, is robotics, and, and the reason robotics crosses the threshold of, of all domains, is not just military, in fact, military is the smallest portion of that, but this is what we, uh, have presented, uh, to the Centers of Innovations Director, they have come down for two visits, we're expecting another third visit, but it requires the integration of academia, it requires the integration of job creation, and it also integrates the economic development, focus on that as well. We've been, uh, we've been assured that the governor will be coming down to visit Fort Benning, and part of that process, he is specifically asked to get updated on how we do our planning, because we have a, we, the team, have a good reputation established at this point in the state, and he wants to come down to see how, how we're doing it, and we're going to present this at the same time. But the bottom line is, if there's a single thing I ask you to walk out of here with, you have to stop sequestration because sequestration is alive and well, it hasn't gone away, it's just been postponed for two years, and in fact, in September of this year, it could fall back into effect again if action's not taken. Pending your questions, sir.
All right, um, Counselor Huff. Thank you, sir, for the presentation and update, um, my question on slide that said Chamber P four team update, uh, about the Georgia Center of Innovation, uh, will this be part of the economic development efforts in this area?
May I see which one you're talking about, sir?
Last. Right before the questions, yeah, that's it, go back, P four, one you just left, all right there, back, one more.
Yes, sir.
Right there, yeah. That's it, I said, will this be part of the efforts in this area, economic development? I said, will this be part of the efforts in this area, economic development?
This, we have a very specific effort going at the, in the Columbus Development Authority focused on robotics. We're, we have Startup, that is an entity that Frank Brasky had last year, we have another young man in there that's going to, to work that area. Robotics has been perceived in a very, very positive light. One of the things that we're really excited about is Fort Benning has just released a requirement to have a all-services robotics conference here in two thousand and twenty. And, and that, that deals with both air, water, and ground. So Benning is now the Army proponent for robotics. And that's, that's a huge step. Columbus State University is really in sync, we're working together, we're just bonded going forward. But robotics plays a huge economic factor in, in us here from a technology, from education perspective, and from job creation.
Okay. I'll give you a call. I've been working in the background with some other people that had the same idea and initiative that Columbus and Georgia as a whole, but as far as Columbus and the region, as far as robotics and technology, and being able to train minds and have the growth to come in, in this region.
The, when you look at the Maneuver Capabilities Development Integration Director, the big, big, long title that Mr. Don Sando, Senior Executive Service, two, two-star equivalent heads, what that really translates to is research and development for infantry, armor, Cav, and the soldier. And it has it for the maneuver force. That is huge, because it brings the folks in here. Now, obviously outreach has been already going out to Georgia Tech, to Auburn, and to other, and University of Georgia, so that, these aren't being worked in a stovepipe approach. There's a lot of outreach to go and take place. But we're really, we're really focused on robotics, and I just can't say enough about the great job that Brian Anderson, Brian Salito, and others are doing on focusing on bringing home issues in robotics.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Yeah, it's a, it's a collaborative that is embraced by all of the, all of the partners in this, in this region. And I will say, our ace in the hole with anything military is this gentleman right here. And the knowledge and the expertise he brings and the preparedness he brings is respected not only throughout the state, but also throughout the DOD. So, Mr. Jones, we appreciate what you do. I've got to put a plug in too for Fort Benning, their leadership. General Britto attended Columbus Day, and, and I mean, he was probably the best salesman for Columbus, I think, that I've ever seen. And, and I think it's important to remember that all, even though we invite them into Columbus all the time, the soldiers, and, and because of the way the community embraces them, I would urge our residents to go visit Fort Benning. Go to a graduation. Man, you want to get goosebumps on your goosebumps and feel good about being American, just go watch those young kids graduating from basic. Watch a Ranger graduation. It's just absolutely, absolutely, it's hard to describe. It just, it gets you, it gets you, gets you all tingly.
From a graduation perspective, that brings eight million dollars a year into this region. When Mom, Dad, Mom and Father is...
That gets me goosebumps too, so, to be honest with you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Oh, just a second. Counselor Davis.
Mr. Jones, thank you so much for coming today, and we really appreciate all you do. We're very, very blessed and fortunate to have you, to have others who keep that relationship and that connection with Fort Benning, and, and help us in where we need to go. I don't know what we would do without having that, I guess, that liaison body that, that helps us so much, and certainly having somebody that knows how to speak the language. I know we have a council member now that knows how to speak the language as well, and some others. We got, we got Pops over there too, I see you, buddy. But, look, I know constantly the political winds are changing, it seems like, but lately, you know, we've, I guess, what I view as strong support for our military and funding has, has been, I guess, we've seen that now, the, the support coming out of Washington, and, and hopefully, we continue to stay strong with our military, but, you know, you never know what's going to happen. You never know what's going to happen. And like you said, you know, that sequester word could really hurt us, you know, the changes in the political winds could really hurt us as well. I worry about that, but we appreciate all you doing and everything that's, that's taking place. It seems like we're making progress, more and more progress. I'd like to ask you, I know last year that you came and talked to us about some of these things. I think the Development Authority came to us as well and made a request of an initiative, and starting initiative, some of the, some of the subjects that we're talking about here, maybe doing some recruiting and, and going out and looking at business development and all, dealing with the military. I know a lot of decisions were being made at the time, being made in Washington, and which direction to go as far as how to utilize all this new technology and new equipment that's come on. A lot of it has come on, and there's still, I understand, a lot of research and development that's going on. I think last year when that request came in, and maybe, I'm just going to ask you, I don't, I know the Development Authority, again, made the request, and I think what we, what we conveyed, what we asked is that they would step up to the plate and, and start the initiative to see if we can make some progress in that area and to see where it goes, and that, that we would be, we would be behind them a hundred percent as we, as we make progress. I guess my question is, has there been, was there anybody hired, or is there anybody working in those areas that we talked about last year? Or where, where is that initiative right now?
So currently, that has been a shared effort between Brian Anderson and Brian Salito that's working that right now. They are, they are considering the right person to bring in rather than a person. They have been phenomenally active. Brian Salito just got back from California, where he was at a Robotics Autonomous Systems Conference. This next month, we're going to Huntsville to specifically meet with individuals on that. Brian Anderson is going up to specifically follow up on one project. In addition to that, we go to Washington Association, the National Conference, and, and we go and we spend time, we call and we meet people, we have follow-ups, and, and we discuss that. Robotics is a very, very hot issue for us, because we're fortunate here that the education piece has fallen in place. CSU is doing a phenomenal job on, on getting the robotics piece in line with what they need, because what they did is they made sure they got with industry and found out what industry needed, and then as a result of that, then they designed the curriculum, and is being, is being received in a very positive manner, pending decisions.
Good, good. So as far as, I guess it would be a positive report that we're, we're making progress in that area and initiating that plan?
Yes, sir, a very positive report. You can sense that as a part, the Chair of the Development Authority, Ross Kerriga, is dead in the middle of robotics. He, I can't remember a Development Authority meeting that he doesn't specifically get down and focus on robotics and the requirements and generating that, and making sure that we have the environment here, that they can come here and grow.
Have we, I guess it's almost been about a year, have we, have we gained any prospects of anybody coming to town that's...
Yes, sir, there are working prospects right now.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir, appreciate the report.
Thank you. Counselor Barnes?
Just want to thank you, Gary, for being as vigilant you are and for keeping us up to date, and to always remind our viewing audience of the threat of sequestration. Keep that, keep that foremost on their mind, because it's never, it's just sleeping, it's just, it's just never done. And also, I would be remiss if I went home and just conveyed from my, from my sweetheart to yours to say hi.
Yes, sir. As Counselor Barnes and Counselor House can tell you, many times, our, our role as the international interpreter, they turn around to you and say, I know what you heard, but that's not what they said. And it's the same, exactly what you're saying to the military. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Counselor Thomas?
Mr. Gary Jones, I would suggest that you might want to talk with Mr. Mike Jones about his conferences coming up. I would not be surprised if at Creative South, there were not some people there who had very creative ideas about robotics, and about how that, those, those innovations and the innovations going on at Fort Benning could work together. You may want to be on the bridge that night during that conference.
I might pass up on the bridge, but I'm sure to get him in touch with Upstart.
The other thing that I wanted to, to mention, you have talked about CSU and their robotics program. They are also, as you know, very involved in the cybersecurity field, which just is another one of those things that just dovetails right into the robotics and to what's going on at Fort Benning. So I think for those who are not aware of all of the interconnections that we have in Columbus and Fort Benning, and all of the industries that are here, and the, the organizations that are here like CSU, all it takes is somebody saying, you know, I've got this idea, and before you know it, somebody has jumped and run with it. So I appreciate what you do, and I appreciate you keeping us updated as you do. This is very, very informative and very necessary for us to know what's going on with our neighbor to the south.
We can never forget the focus, you have to focus, I'm sorry, you sound like I'm preaching the par. The focus has to be, it's an economic development project, four-point-eight billion dollars, forty-two thousand jobs, and we focus on mission growth and BRAC preparation.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Gary.
Thanks, sir.
Mayor, next I'm going to call our Finance Director, Angelica Alexander, and she's got our coroner, Buddy Bryan, here, and they've got a budget matter that they are going to present to you today. Finance Director, Angelica Alexander.
Good afternoon. Yes, City Manager mentioned, the coroner is here today pursuant to ordinance thirteen dash thirty-nine, in which he must come before this council and request for additional appropriations. As far as I'm aware, the coroner had an unexpected engine issue with one of his vehicles, and it required just about a little bit more than six thousand dollars to replace that engine. So as I understand it, the coroner is making an additional appropriation request for about ten thousand dollars. And he's here to address any questions that you may have.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Yeah, I was here March eighteenth last year for the same reason, and every year I'm underbudgeted, and every year I'm here for the same reason. I can't control the number of cases we have every year. When I took office in two thousand and thirteen, we had six-hundred-and-sixty-two. The count for two thousand and eighteen was eight-hundred-and-eighty. You do the math, that's two-hundred more bodies a year that we're having. Those are direct expenses, nothing I can do about it. Engine gives out in my car, I took it to maintenance, I had a little tick, and I took it to maintenance. And mechanic says, oh, will all the Ford's do that? I said, oh, okay. So I left. A week later, I come back, I got a little bit louder tick, and I said, hey, my car's ticking a whole lot louder now. He said, well, you know, all the city cars do that. About two weeks later, I took it back, and I said, well, that thing's ticking so loud now, I can't even hear myself think. And then Mike, the director, who's a real good friend of mine and does a great job, got involved and called me and said, man, we got to put a new engine in your car. And I believe that could have been averted, but it wasn't my fault. So y'all know I do a good job? I know I do a good job. I try to stay within my budget. I do a lot of community support for the city of Columbus and for my department. I don't like being here any more than you want me here. If y'all would consider raising my budget a little bit this coming year, then I won't be here next March, I promise you that, because I try to control my budget, but things happen. Honorable Mayor Pro Tem, Ms. Turner, last year said, maybe we should consider giving Buddy an open operating budget expense, because he can't control the number of deaths. I thought that was a great idea, it must have fallen off the table. I'm not here asking for anything that I don't need or deserve. So I'd appreciate your, you know, understanding, and I thank y'all for all that you do. Congratulations to the new members that haven't met me. John, ma'am?
Well, he has indicated ten thousand dollars, and I'm going to let the Finance Director respond, but you indicated an engine is about six thousand.
It was a little bit more than sixty-one hundred for the replacement of the engine. So I mean, if you're okay, you know, I, one of the things that I'd like to maybe do this upcoming fiscal year is maybe sit down with the coroner and, and look at the budget in line item detail. I, I do believe that there are probably some SAP wage monies that may need to be shifted from personnel into operating, so that he could have more monies in his operating budget. In reviewing the wage line item that he has, that covers his part-time drivers and his part-time coroners, it's likely that he'll have savings within that, that individual line item, but that is not a part of his operating budget. It's part of his budget as a whole, but not a part of the budget that he can spend without council's approval. So I think what we'll do going into FY twenty is look at redistributing some of that money that's already exist, that already exists in his budget, just in the personnel portion, and redistribute that to some of his operating budget, and I think that will help the coroner out going into FY twenty. So, so although the request is for ten thousand, I, and I, and I don't know what all the other needs the coroner may have, I've, if council feels comfortable with just only approving the appropriation for the cost of the engine replacement, I would support that.
And...
Sixty-one hundred.
So let's say a thousand would be safe.
But there's other savings within the budget that would account for the other four thousand dollars.
Yes. Miss, Miss Mayor, I, I think we should hear above and beyond the engine what the coroner is, is asking for, and then I want to assure you that he made some statements about a mechanic and ticking on a, on a forward, that I want to look a little bit further into the mechanic and the ticking. Now, I, I do know that the forwards do tick. I can tell you that, because I drove one for a lot of years, and it squeaked and ticked all the time. And, but I, I just want to make sure the reference to the mechanic is in context with the ticking, and so I will look into that.
Okay. Counselor Davis?
Well, I, I think what we're talking about here falls under the budget ordinary requirements, so if this is deemed an emergency, which I would think the new engine is, I mean, it'd be appropriate request, but I think it's got to be recommended based on our requirements.
Well, well, that is, no doubt, the engine needs to be replaced. At sixty-one hundred dollars, I'm trying to see what the, what gets it to ten thousand, and that's what I'd like to hear from the coroner.
There are other areas that every year for the last six, that every year for the last six years, that we're always over budget. Copy, mail, travel, and auto. Now, all those... There are other areas that every year for the last six years, that we're always over budget. Copy, mail, travel, and auto. Now, all those relate back to the number of cases we have. We're getting more requests from attorneys for medical records, documentation, autopsy reports, more and more of those are coming in. So, that means more and more certified bill going out. It also means more and more copies, and this is every year for the last six years, those same light items. We've asked for an increase every year for the last six years. We're not getting it, but we're certainly having to spend the money to do it, auto expenses. And I have sworn in two part-time deputies. They're just on-call. State law mandates that I can do that. They get $175 per body. Now, the reason I did that is because I'm working on-call about 520 hours a month, and my other two deputies are on-call and working about 480 hours a month apiece. So, when we have somebody go out on vacation for three or four weeks, Charles or myself were doing every other day, or Freeman and myself were doing every other day. So, I had to have some relief. So, I swore in these deputies, they're on-call. When we need them, we'll have them cover for us. Now, they might only cover two days a week, but if I got somebody out for six weeks, that means a lot to me, to give me a peace of mind and quality of life, family life. The travel part of it is, they are mandated to go to school every year to keep their certification. We've been budgeted for three, that's me and Charles and Freeman. Now, I've got five, so that's part of why we're over in that area. But I need them. One of my deputies might have to have both knees replaced, he's going to be out for three or four months. I got to be prepared, because I'm not willing to work every day for four months. It's not safe.
So, Miss Mayor, it appears that we probably have some money in salary savings or personnel. You know, what I can recommend right now, I mean, if they repair a $6,100, I would not propose to you more than $7,000 today. And that's what I would recommend.
$7,000?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem?
Well, something suggests. Do we have to approve the engine dollars today?
Do we have to?
If you can bring it back during the next meeting.
Well, I mean, if it's an engine.
The full request, if it's to justify.
Well, I would suggest that you approve $7,000 today. If he has specific requests that would take it to $10,000, we'll bring it back.
I'll make a motion to approve the seven.
Make a motion second to approve $7,000?
And may I add to the motion?
They made the motion.
Sure.
There is a motion.
Mr. Mayor? Yes. You understand what we're doing, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Right. We can't go over that right now unless it's deemed an emergency request, and that's based on our budgetary ordinance requirements. The rest, any other request you have, should be done during the budget process. So, I think that's what the Finance Director was talking about, that she's going to look into it for you, try to help you there with the rest of it. But I would deem this your request as a city manager. It's required by the city manager and mayor to recommend it, and they have, so hopefully that gets you the engine you need.
Well, I appreciate y'all, I really do.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to be in a part of this.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank y'all, appreciate it.
Mayor Pro Tem, did you have something else?
I don't want us to wait until the budget time to look at additional requests. I want us to sometime between now and the next, we have two weeks.
Two weeks.
If they can get together and look at his budget protectors and see if there's additional that we should probably need during this budget cycle.
Well, and Mayor, I don't mind, if he has something that he needs to submit, submit it to the Finance Director and justify it, I mean, we'll do what we got to do.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Coroner, appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, we have a motion.
Oh, we, that's right, I'm sorry. We do have a motion second to approve $7,000 additional spend in the coroner's budget. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? It passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all.
And next, Mr. Mayor, we, just a, I've got procurement process. What I would ask her to do is just go very quickly through, because we've already had the discussion.
Okay.
But, yeah, I think she's.
Think so, huh?
Yeah, and some of the slides will show you dollar amounts and what they do, so, like $1,000, what they do, $5,000, that kind of thing. So, just quickly go through this.
Yes. That's actually in the handout. The, as the city manager mentioned, a lot of this you heard this morning from the internal auditor. This process is just what we do from the Finance Department perspective, just from start to finish. You can use these documents as a reference. It'd be a good reference tool, just so that you know, like I said, the process within the Finance Department from start to finish, as well as the handouts that are accompanying the presentation. The first handout being a synopsis of the purchasing limits, which just says for small purchases, it's less than $1,000, what that process is. If it's from $5,000 to $999,000, what that process is, and if it's anything $10,000 or greater, what that process is. So, that's in one handout. The second handout, it just provides a brief synopsis of the difference between a request for proposal and a request for bid. So, request for proposal, or RFP as we like to call it, it's administered by the Purchasing Division of the Finance Department. The User Department Office assigns a project manager to really sort of oversee it from their perspective. Step one is just that the project manager contacts the Purchasing Division to obtain goods or services, and when the Purchasing Division determines if an RFP process is appropriate, the project manager submits a draft of the detailed specifications, which includes the evaluation criteria, what the weighting is based on as far as that evaluation criteria, and if any local preference is desired. The Purchasing Manager then reviews the draft and assigns an RFP to a buyer. We currently have three buyers within the Finance Department that oversees all of the RFPs and, four buyers, I'm sorry, that currently oversees all the RFPs and RFPs for the city. The buyer assigns an RFP number and establishes a file, which we are required to maintain for a potential period of five years. So, all RFPs that have been issued, we have those contract files within the city's possession for a five-year period. And so, then if a pre-proposal conference or a site visit is required, the buyer then coordinates with the project manager and the purchasing manager. And honestly, most of the timing, as far as when it hits the street to when it's awarded, is the coordination effort that's put in place by the Purchasing Division. We have to coordinate all schedules with the committee, with the Purchasing Department, with the vendor, if there are any demonstrations or anything that's necessary. So, that is where the timing takes place. That provides the most delay. So, a revised draft of the RFP is reviewed by the Purchasing Manager. A final draft of the RFP is then forwarded to the project manager for review. If they need to make any modifications, they do so at that time.
And I would just say that this is where the Purchasing Manager has to make sure that, you know, the User Department, and you saw that in the first slide, has not written specifications, drafted specifications, that they know that they want a certain lawnmower and they want it from a certain company, and so that's where all of this comes in, and that's where I expect the project manager to make sure that there's no playing around going on.
So, step eight, the project manager then submits a list of names for evaluation committee members, and the evaluation committee is usually composed of three to five voting, or five voting members, and these members each have their own individual expertise that they bring to the committee.
Angelica, I'm sorry to interrupt. Counselor Thomas has a question.
Mr. City Manager, I think I'm going to direct this at you rather than at Ms. Alexander. I would suggest and request that in selecting the evaluation committee members, that you think about the appropriateness of having the internal auditor on one of these committees. And my reason for saying that is, one of the internal auditor's responsibilities is to audit the activities of departments, and I would not, not our current internal auditor, but a future internal auditor, be influenced by some of this. I think it's highly inappropriate for the internal auditor to be on the selection committee. So, just think about that.
I agree with you, because just like in this case where you asked the internal auditor to go and look, well, what if the internal auditor was on that committee?
Yes.
So, I absolutely, I thought about that when I heard that, so I get that.
So, if you would, I just think that there are other people who are available.
Sure.
And as my mama used to say, we will avoid the very appearance of people.
Absolutely. Got you, got you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
So, there are advisory, non-voting members that are usually on the committee, and all voting members cannot be from the same department. So, step nine, a due date is determined, and the RFP is advertised. Its advertisement is placed in the local newspapers, on the city's purchasing website, on the Georgia Procurement Registry, as we are required by law to put our proposals out there, and any other professional publications as deemed necessary. Existing and potential vendors who are registered with the Georgia Procurement Registry are notified when there's an upcoming RFP, in which they have registered for that particular commodity on the Georgia Procurement Registry's website. And as the vendors receive their RFP packages, they may have questions. All questions are coordinated through the Purchasing Division in writing. The committee is prohibited from contacting, providing any responses directly to any potential vendors, and the vendor is prohibited from contacting any individual outside of the Purchasing Division regarding the solicitation. So, then, if there are questions, the Purchasing Division prepares the responses to any questions and clarifications, and then the buyer prepares an addendum that is posted on the city's website as well as the Georgia Procurement Registry. So, the proposals are received by the established deadline. The purchasing manager or designated reviews the original response of each proposal, just to make sure that all the required information is included in that. We have someone that records that information as we go through that original proposal. The pre-evaluation committee meeting is scheduled by the buyer, in which all committee members receive a copy of the proposal. They also get an overview of expectations from the purchasing manager, as well as the confidentiality rules and the overall process. So, after the proposals are received, the first evaluation committee meeting is scheduled to discuss each proposal. Additional evaluation meetings are scheduled if further clarification from the committee members are needed, or if further clarification from the vendors are required. The voting members will then individually complete the evaluation forms for each vendor. The buyer compiles the scores and reviews the results with the purchasing manager. Then a tabulation of those scores is forwarded to the committee, and the committee will do one of the following. They'll either meet to discuss the scores, shortlist the vendors for presentations, demonstrations, or site visits. They'll recommend an award to the highest ranking vendor, or preliminary negotiations with the highest ranking vendor can proceed at that time. And that's one of the reasons with an RFP, while the confidentiality rules are in place, is because of the negotiation aspect of it. We don't want information leaking out to different potential vendors as to what one is doing, so that the process remains open and fair, as far as competition is concerned. So, once the committee decides to award a recommendation, each member of the committee will sign off on that recommendation. The buyer prepares the RFP recommendation to appear on the city manager's agenda for the next available council meeting, and a separate memo is prepared that contains additional information related to the RFP to the city manager. And once it's brought to council, of course, the award recommendation is either approved or not approved by a majority vote of council. So, once that process has concluded, as far as council is concerned, the buyer sends a letter to the vendors not selected. The buyer then coordinates the execution of the contract by the city manager, and then a copy of the contract is forwarded to the project manager, who is responsible for monitoring the performance of the contractor. So, sort of just wrapping up this proposal presentation for prospective vendors, employees, and officials, do contact the Purchasing Division with any questions or concerns regarding solicitations and/or vendor complaints. Part of that contract management system that we have in place is that the Purchasing Division investigates all complaints against vendors. If you are logged into the city's servers, there is a link on the, under the employees' directory where you can access the vendor complaint database and log your complaint there. Of course, you can send emails directly to the Purchasing Division Manager, myself, or one of the buyers with such a complaint. And also, while an active solicitation is going on, we don't engage in any proper communication. The following language is included in our general specifications, I mean, provisions for all bid specifications, all RFP specifications, and it just says that all contact concerning this solicitation shall be made through the Purchasing Division, and that vendors should not contact city employees, department heads, using agencies, evaluation committee members, or elected officials with questions or concerns about the solicitation. Of course, all of those concerns must be sent to the Purchasing Division in writing, and violations may result in the disqualification of submissions. That's part of our current procurement process, and so that is it. Was that quick enough?
We've got a question from Counselor House. Well, try it again. Hang on, we'll get you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Finance Director. I want to make sure I'm straight on the appeals process, so we don't have what we had with the Tims contract. If a bidder feels that they were wrong, for whatever reason, they would appeal to the Purchasing Department first.
That is correct. We would have a post-award conference with the, with that particular bidder, and we would, at that time, go through the evaluation results. But we cannot do that until the contract is actually awarded by council.
Okay. If the bidder does that, or the loser in the bid does that, and they're still displeased, what does purchasing tell them to do?
Well, I will say, once they've gone through our process with purchasing, and they're not happy, obviously, they can come to the city manager, and if they're not happy, then they should come to council.
Okay, all right. I just want to make sure I understand how you want them to go, in case, in case I get another email message.
If they're not satisfied, once they appeal through our formal process, they can, so I want to see the city manager, and I'd say that I support the decision rendered by our purchasing folk, and they're like, "Well, I'm going to go to council."
Okay.
And typically, the folks that respond to those bids, they know they can, in their mind, they know they can do the work, so when they don't get awarded, there's going to be something they take issue with in the process, almost, almost 100% of the time.
Okay.
All right. Counselor Davis?
Mr. City Manager, somewhat, you know, we, through the process we talked about earlier and a lot of the questions that came up, it kind of occurred to me that, in looking through some of the, and I guess in thinking out loud here, it's really a recommendation, possibly. I don't know where it fits. It may fit, it may not, it just may be something to think about. But I believe that there's. But I believe that there's questions that are asked. I think there's parts that are, you have to fill out. I guess you have to write a little sentence or two in addressing questions that are asked. And again, depending on what the bid may be, what subject we're talking about, it certainly wouldn't apply to all of them. But maybe in an area of, I don't think I saw anything dealing with customer service and professionalism and things of that nature. I don't know if there's a way to explore that, that committees can explore that. Maybe that's a, could be a line item or a question.
Well, and I think we can.
In the process, I don't know. But it just kind of struck me that that may be something that, an area that, you know, might want to explore, depending, again, depending on request or the bid, or whatever the need may be.
We can certainly do that as part of what we call the boilerplate information. By the way, this is Andrea McCorvey. She's our Purchasing Division Manager. And, but we can include things in those documents related to our expectations regarding customer service. And I was having a conversation with the mayor the other week, and someone mentioned to us about people doing business for us, and they have these orange signs out that say, "Men working ahead." Well, if they work for the, if they got a contract with the city, they were saying, the question was, should that sign say, "Men working ahead"? Because there may be some... So I said, we'll look, the mayor told them, "We'll look into that," you know? And we want to make sure our own signs, I know this is getting away, where our city crews are working, don't have that. So, but those are things we can include, that they've got to be gender conscious, or what, you know, about.
Exactly. And that may even be more relevant. I know the mayor's big in the customer satisfaction, customer service. But, I mean, if they're out there, like you just made the point, they're working for the city, then, you know, they need to meet those standards, I think. Because I think we all stand firm on that.
Other organizations have SLA, Service Level Agreements, that they'll maintain a certain percentage of approval rating from the customers. So, you know, I don't think there's anything wrong. And you know, listen, as the world changes, and as the way we deliver services changes, then our different departments have to communicate with Ms. McCorvey about some tweaks and changes in the expectations they have for the vendors that contract with the city. And I expect, and I know the city manager has expected through the years, that those are evaluated every year. And that we're looking at whether or not we're still asking for the same things that we need, or same things maybe that we have been, that we, some we don't need now. And then maybe adding some we do. So I think it's a very, very good point, and I will stay on it.
So we got that.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. McCorvey, I hope you're feeling better. Most, you know, I've heard of giving an arm and a leg for your work, but you've still got the leg, anyway.
All right. So the final update is on demolitions, Mayor and Council. The critical vacancies, we've delayed that, and we'll bring that back at another meeting. Mr. John Hudgerson, inspections and codes. This is thick, but he's got a lot of pictures that he's going to go through really quick.
All right. I'm still morning, I guess, mid-morning, afternoon. I'm going to go through these pretty quickly, but I did, most of it is pictures, if you see. Our concern is just how we deal with our demolitions. Just kind of right off the bat there, we have 208 open property maintenance cases. And property maintenance is somebody just saying, "The water's not working." You know, "They may be missing utilities, windows might be broken, stove's not working, door's kicked open," that kind of stuff. Once you get to the demolition cases, that's another 157, which are in the yellow. So it is in every part of the city. It's not like one zone is, you know, we add more in certain areas. But every council district has a concern. Kind of the agenda what I want to go through today is the concerns of our abandoned properties and the process. So how do we go, how do we proceed with these properties, and how do we get them into compliance? And then I have cost proposals. City Manager asked me to kind of pool together some numbers for the trailer park issues that we've had, some larger commercial properties that we have, and residential properties. So you'll have a number here to take with you to say, "Hey, if we wanted to solve this problem, it could potentially cost X dollars." So we'll have that together. And I'll give a shout out to my wife, because she said, "Don't just lead in numbers and don't have any solutions." So I made sure I brought up some proposals and things that we've been doing to try to help stem some of this. So I've been working on the last two years with Captain Kennedy with CPD, kind of on some issues that they deal with. Because a lot of times, when they're going out there on special ops and things like that, a lot of these abandoned houses are the houses they're having to go to. They're having to deal with these houses for whatever reasons. You know, people are running from them, they've caught them, that's where they are, stash houses, things like that. So these are the things that we normally deal with. Arson, I know that property on Second Avenue, the one that caught fire when you come right in, that two-story little house, the homeless guy was in there, you know, and set fire to the house. You know, he was just trying to keep warm, and that's what happened. So these kind of issues is what these abandoned properties kind of perpetuate and issues we have. Jumped vehicles, like a lot of times, we tell you, "We can't tow them off private property. They're on an abandoned lot." So who am I going after on that abandoned lot to get these vehicles removed? Vehicle theft, scrap metal theft. That's what happened to all the, almost all of those trailer parks. People just came in and just started pulling the copper, the tin off the side of them, off the roofs, and that's why they look the way they do. Because people came in there and just started pulling stuff off of them. And then obviously, the people that live around those areas, obviously, they have to deal with the loss of property value. So, since I've been director in 2006, we've had 698 new property maintenance cases, 188 new demolition cases, and we've torn down about 38 properties by the city. So that's less than 5% of the cases, and this is just since 2016, that we've dealt with. And we've started, we boarded up about nine houses as of this point. So I'll quickly go through the demolition process. Ideally, the complaint's made to the city, whether it's through my department, 3-1-1, however we get them, Facebook messages, text, anything. So we go out and investigate. We talk, we talk to the citizen, we talk to the people next door, kind of any information they can tell us. Also, we follow a fire EMS. Because a lot of times, if it's a fire property, we kind of make sure that we're aware of what's going on. If it's to the point where the property needs to be torn down, then we just make an emergency, and we move forward and get it torn down. Typically, kind of that's our levels there. So property maintenance, like I said, if it's something pretty minor, we're not worried about it. It's a 45-day letter, you know, somebody may be, you know, the railing on your porch may be missing, something fairly minor. So those things, we give the owner 45 days to come into compliance, because that gives them time to order the materials, get everything on site. And if a permit needs to be pulled, say, if you've got a hole in your roof, that gives you time to pull the permit, gets you to, gets you time to do all of that. You move to the demolition list in what we call the 50% rule. So that is, if we go out to the property and we look at it based, and we compare it to the fair market value that's listed on the tax assessor site. So say that property costs, you know, the house, just the building, not the land, but the building costs, say, $40,000. But you've got to rip off a whole new roof, or you've got structural failures. If it's at least $20,000 or more that we would project in damages, we would say, "Hey, you need to move to the demolition list." So that's kind of where we go, that's how we proceed in that process. And an emergency manager is just like this one that was on 40th, that caught fire, and you know, you can see it all the way from downtown. We got down there, and we just said, "Hey." I called Public Works, and I said, "Hey, we just need to skid steer, just push it over." Because literally, it was starting to bolt, and it could have affected either neighbors on either side. So we just said, "Hey, just come on down, knock it down." And we just, we'll send the bill to the owner at that, after that. So the owner's notified. They're notified through a certified letter. So they do get proper notice that they've been served of what's wrong with this property, whether it's abandoned or a property maintenance issue. We copy the demolition process, so they understand how it can progress if things aren't taken care of. These are our four big things that we deal with. We have out-of-town owners. Ideally, most of our, the environmental court and everything that falls under property maintenance is criminal in nature. So if I need to issue a citation, if you're in town, if you're within the city limits, I can find you and I can issue a citation. But if, say, if you're on the south side of town, and, you know, it's an Army family, and they've moved, and now they're in, you know, Virginia, or Texas, or wherever, I can send that letter to tell them, "Hey, something's wrong with your house." But I don't have any mechanism to get them to come back into Columbus to come to compliance. A lot of times, we have deceased owners. Unfortunately, the probate court, you know, nobody probates the next of kin. So I, you know, I'm sending, I'm sending a letter, that was at Riverside Drive. So I'm sending a letter to Riverside Drive, the person is deceased. So I'm sending a letter to this location. And obviously, you know no one lives there. So obviously, nobody's checking the mail. But on the tax assessor site, that is the owner that's showing up the property. Air property owners, we have those all over. And so you'll have four or five people that are responsible for this one house. So I've got to get sign off from all four or five of those people to say, "Hey, it's okay," or "We're going to fix this." And, you know, scattershot, luckily, I hope that, you know, between those five, somebody will come back and say, "Hey, we'll do something with this property." But sometimes we do, and sometimes we don't. And then last, LLCs, those, like I said, those are corporations. So ideally, trying to go after those people and get them into court is really tough. And so a lot of times, you know, these companies will come in and buy up all these properties, and then they'll be on their LLC, we'll go to the Secretary of State's site and find out they've dissolved, they don't exist anymore. They're a new company, you know? So once again, we're trying to find who we can pull in to be responsible.
John, can I interrupt you for a minute? Clifton, is there any, can you check and see if there's any legal way that if we don't get a respond by a certain time period from any of these, that we can domain these buildings? I mean, there's got to be something, because we're putting the community at risk for years and years and years, and they're just sitting there. Because if somebody died, and we don't know who has the estate, that property continues to be there and become a harmful and a nuisance to the neighbors. Could you just, don't answer me now, but can you kind of follow up and see if we can find a law? Or is there something we can do in the state legislature, you know, to give us that power or authority to be able to do something? Let's say, for example, we tried for two years, and we can't get a hold of anyone. Then can the city take over the property? Something like that. That's just an example.
Imminent domain you got to pay for, but yeah.
But I know that's like a cuss word for us, so I want to know when we could use it. But I think this is a, yeah. But I think this is a perfect example where we could use it and make that property available and put it back on the tax roll for someone else to use.
We'll look at it. That's public nuisance, what you're talking about.
Yeah. There you go. Could you please? Thank you, John. I'm just trying to help you, John.
No, that's fine. All right. So once we get to the point of the 50% rule, we've gone past the 45-day rule, 45-day letter, we told the owner that they need to come in. Now, we sent another letter to them telling them of the demolition hearing. We have that the fourth Wednesday of every month. We have a list of properties that are over the 50%. We've had continuous non-compliance, which is saying, "Hey, owner, you know, this is the date to come in and tell us, hey, this is my plans with this property." Sometimes they'll come in, we'll have some owners that just can't afford it. We have somebody, I know, lives Talboton Road, you know? He passed, but he owns like 30 properties. His daughter came in and said, "I can't maintain all of these." You know, she just, she just said, she just said she couldn't maintain it. So, you know, so a lot of times, they do come in, we'll have some that say, "Hey, you know, it's a fire property, we're waiting on our insurance to come in, X, Y, and Z." So a lot of times, we work with them as well. So this is kind of the last stop before we start bringing it to you all that is eligible for demolition. So at that point, we have that meeting and say, "That's expired." We go back out to the site, and it's still in the same condition. That's when we call our city demolition contractor. We have two vendors. We call them and say, "Hey, we need a price." So at least from this point, I have a problem property, I know what the price is. And then that's when we start to proceed to come to council. On the average cost of demolition is $12,000. A lot of people say, "Man, that's high." But once you count in your asbestos, your lead testing, we've got to properly dispose of it the way it needs to be. Yes, we, you know, in the past, we probably could have got away doing it for, you know, $4,500, $5,000. But just the cost of lead, especially a lot of these properties, they are older. So they do have lead, they have asbestos, they have those type of things, and it's just expensive. A lot of the properties we also deal with are burned properties. One of the benefits of the demo contractor, the demo contractor, we say, "Hey, this, you know, you're abating the nuisance, but hey, he may be able to salvage the brick. He might be able to salvage the windows. He might be, but if it's a burned property, you can't salvage any of that. It's all, you know, smoke laden, you can't do anything with it." So those properties cost more, because there's less for him to salvage to offset his cost of work. So then we come to council, we do the first reading and second reading. Ideally, on that first reading, we give them our opportunity that if they want to come in and still salvage the property at this point, they claim that they've never heard anything. We tell them that they have to have in hand, they have to have the contractor ready to move forward, and they have to show that they have the financial ability to do it. So ideally, we've had one that's come to council but did not have any of those qualifications to be able to do anything with the property. So we move forward with the demolition. So at that point, we notify the contractor after that second reading. We give them a list, they have the list, and they go to work. Demolition is complete, and the property is owned, the owner is built for the cost. The city never takes ownership of the property, so that's where that imminent domain, we're just abating the nuisance. So the nuisance goes away, and the city never owns the property, but we do put a lien on the property. So, what I'm going to kind of zip through these is the residential property costs. Just kind of showing you some of these properties that we're dealing with. That's on Oakley, Baxley Drive. Once again, it's a burned property. That's just what it is. Harveston Drive, 420 26th Street, Neal Drive, South Andrews Circle, Forsyth Street, East Wenton, Seventh Avenue. And as you can tell, this is one of those properties where you have people that may come in and do other things, or may be in the house, because you can see the door's been kicked open, even though the owner at one time did board up the, you know, the front window, but they got in there some kind of way. Universe Road, another burned property. Dorsey, another burned property. So we do the average cost of demolition at about $12,000. Then we do a cost per, you have to do the asbestos and lead testing per house. So regardless if there's any or not, we have to, we have a base price of $500 per property that we have to put in. So we do, our cost per house is $12,500. And the current number of homes currently on the list is 142 homes. So that would put the cost of just the residential properties would be $1.7 million. That's if, we just took, like I said, and that's from this point forward. That's not as if we have ones that are on property maintenance that eventually may become demolition cases. This is currently what we have that we could bring to council two weeks from now to say, "Hey, they're ready," because they've been on the list, and we've done all our due process. All right. So we go from residential to trailer parks. We've gotten a lot of calls about, you know, the one on Far Road, the ones on Oakusida. We've been dealing with them for a while, unfortunately. This is 988 Far Road. This is one of the ones that hadn't really been on the radar lately, but three, four years ago, it was on our radar, people were being evicted out of that property. Now it's just become a dump site, because there's no barricades at the front. So you kind of got to go in the back to see this, but this is what's out there. You have two CMU block buildings, you have at least 59 single wides, and you have five double-wide trailers. And so, like I said, with no barricades there on the street, they just turn in, go back in there, dump their stuff, and leave. So we don't have any tracks to know who it is, it's not original to the site. Like I was telling you about the theft, they stripped everything off the side of that trailer they could, they went in and took all the copper. So even if somebody wanted to come, another trailer park owner would come in and try to salvage those trailers, obviously, there's nothing to salvage, is what's left. 527 Far Road, that's the one we're dealing with at Fort Bennett Estates. Still really no response from him as to where it stands. But currently out there, we have 60 standing single-wide trailers and two double wides in one storage building. Somebody came and started pulling some of the other trailers. I don't know where they went, but they're not there anymore. So that's another property. And now, eventually, that property wound up looking like this. Because the longer it stands, and nobody's on that property, there's no management staff, there's nobody there to stop people from coming in and out, it's going to eventually look like that. 4325 Oakusida Road, same issue. They came and pulled, stripped all the tin around the outside. That one to that picture to the left, that one, literally, the structural failure. So you got people out there just pulling stuff out of the thing, not knowing what's load band, what's not. And, you know, you get a nice stiff wind, and they're going to start falling in on themselves. Because the structural, that's just what's left. And that's 2631 Casidero. Once again, you've got burned properties out there that, laundromat, I think, block building caught fire beginning of last year. It's just, like I said, it's just one of those properties that just continues to degrade. So we had to, both of our contractors go out and kind of priced the different, the cost for each one of those properties. So we do have a cost there to move forward with demolition of all of those properties. We would raise them to the ground. The asphalt would stay at this point unless we determined what we were going to do with underground work. But at least to get the trash and the old trailers off the site, all that together would be $432,000 to complete. So now we move on to the commercial properties. I probably get more calls about these properties than any of the other properties, because they're bigger. So ideally, more people are around them, and we get more calls. Hmm? Yes, sir? Hmm? Yes, sir?
On the trailer park pieces that you showed us, uh, if we were, if we had to clean it up, is there any way we can recoup our money from the present owners?
Well, that's where the lien would go towards. So, once this work is done, like, so say, 2631 Casidero, we clean that site, that $47,000 will be a lien placed against that property.
Okay.
Well, and, and I've asked staff to research if, if the cost to clean the property is equal to or exceeds the fair market value of what's there. Uh, and they are gonna be, they are talking to the city attorney's office and others to determine if we can just go ahead and take the property. Because otherwise, we'll clean it up and we'll, and they'll, 30 years from now, the vacant lot will still be there and we will never get our money back.
Okay.
And so, we, we just gotta figure out how to, how to go about, you know, selling it on the courthouse or whatever, but I've got them working on how to get, take possession of the property and at least we can do something with it.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Counselor Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, John, or city attorney, or city manager, do we have any numbers that show roughly how long we invest in these properties before we get a return? I mean, if we demo a property five years ago, put a lien on it, how quickly do they turn over? I mean, how quickly do we get?
Those properties, and he'll show, you, you, I think you've got
You already got?
The number of properties, it'll come a little later, but we end up 20, 25 years and we're still, you know, I mean, it's, it's just crazy.
Well, but we've got to look at unique ways and innovative ways for us to dispose of property because sometimes when we sit on a piece of property trying to get fair market value that we're never gonna get in that area, all we're doing is eating up a lot that somebody else can be paying taxes on. I mean, it's, to me, it makes more financial sense to, through a fair bid process, dispose of it. I don't care if we get 20 cents on the dollar, as long as we recover something and get it back on the tax rolls.
Well, and, and, and Mayor, uh, that's, I'm glad you made that point because, are we doing that today? Uh, well, I'm, that staff is working on exactly what you just said, Mayor.
Yeah.
Uh, we're gonna be, we, we are identifying by department by department, every single piece of property we own and some that we're leasing for a dollar a year, like a church for parking and all of that. And we are going to be approaching you about disposing of that property and putting, putting it back on the tax roll.
Okay.
And, and, and here's, and I'll get back to, to Mr. Hudsonson, but here's the thing. We've got some property that, um, the, the appraised price is greater than what anyone would ever pay for it.
I agree.
And our policy is that we don't accept any less than what the fair market value. So, when we come back to you, we're gonna be talking to you about that. So, exactly what you just said, Mayor, staff, we're working on it.
And that's been a big problem because sometimes they'll do a commercial approach to an appraisal and it, uh, it comes out on a replacement cost or something like that, or, and it's just, I mean, you know, as soon as you get that value, you're like, there's no way anybody's gonna pay it. I'm glad you're, you're undertaking it, I agree.
That's where I was headed with my question, so I'm glad you're, great minds think alike.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Alright, Counselor Davis?
Thank you, Mayor.
Director Hudsonson, um, I suspect that some of these properties that you're showing us here are not paying property taxes?
Yes.
Is that a true statement?
Uh, yes and no.
Do we know who's paying property taxes and who's not? We, we do, and of course, if they're not paying their property tax, then that's a matter that the tax commissioner, you know, will go through their process to dispose of that property on the courthouse step.
Well, it just seems to me that it'd be a better use of your funds. If those properties are not paying taxes, it's what, three years? And then, what's the law say about that, three years? And the city can take it over?
Well, I, I, the tax commissioner normally
Faster than that.
Yeah.
Faster than that. That's the tax commissioner foreclosing on the property.
Well, those seem to be the properties that you might be able to get your return a lot quicker than maybe some of these other ones. I mean, I would really try to focus on
Well, we, we're gonna be coming back to you because we're trying to figure out how to, because see, we're challenged, and, and that's why we're gonna be coming back to you. We cannot continue to mow and maintain these overgrown weed and we're diverting our resources to do things that we could be, yeah, put it back on the
Well, e- either that or they just need to be, they need to be disposed of and whoever buys it, give them a discount, let them clean it up. But I mean, that'd be part of the, the package agreement would be, you clean it up, we, you know, we give it to you for a discount, it goes back on the tax rolls. I mean, there ought to be, I think we, we probably need to
We're coming back to you.
Work together on this, I guess, with what I'm reading between the lines, work together on this to get these properties where they need to be because we get, I mean
Well, we're working on it.
Okay. You know, and that would be, that's an alternative plan to demolition that we're paying for and it's set with a lien, that's what really we're going with it. Get them back on the tax roll a lot quicker.
Mr. City Attorney?
Another tool that you have that can help things get back on the tax roll quickly is the Land Bank Authority because if these houses have a lien that exceeds the fair market value, you can get it transferred into the name of the Land Bank Authority. They can extinguish that lien and even taxes, but they have to be done for a purpose under the state law such as low-income housing development. But that's just another tool.
And, and that too, we're looking at
You need to look at that.
We are, we're all looking at that, and we're gonna talk about amnesty today. We're looking at, we, we got some, we're looking at all that, sure.
Alright, uh, we've got one more, Counselor Woodson?
Well, I'm just, um, John, I'm gonna let you continue, but that's what I was trying to talk about before when I was saying domain, exactly what, um, the city manager was saying. If we can get this property into our name, um, then we can get rid of that. Um, so I'm looking anxious, I'm gonna shut up and look anxious to see what you're saying because we gotta think out of the box on how we can do it and so that we can, because there's a lot of, lot in our city that's worthless.
Alright, so we'll go through the commercial properties, um, properties that the city does currently own or other private entities that own that, you know, cost to, to take care of. This is, uh, Bealwood School on Alexander.
We, we, we own it and, and not for, we haven't owned it for long and we do have mo, we have interest in that, we have several who are interested in that property.
Uh, this is property, uh, 3646 Picture Drive.
Do we own that?
Another one on 42, no, we don't own that one, just
Who's the owner, have you been able to reach him?
As I said, we'll have, I can, I can give you all the list of all the, the communications, the time we've sent emails, the monthly visits, my inspectors go out there trying to find anybody on the site that may even resemble someone that may be working on the property. That we, anything we can do to try to get a hold of somebody.
Clifton, that's a great example, I want you to get rid of, which is magic one.
Snowdon on, uh, Victory Drive, um, property across from Spencer High School on Fort Bennett Road. Uh, Rosemont Schools, which we do also own, I believe. Uh, once again, a large tract of land that we own. Not sure if we own that one.
Who owns it?
School district then, we own, yeah, we own Alexander because that was the purpose, that's right. We don't own this one.
Have we contacted school district about it? I don't know.
Yep.
Well, I think you need to have a serious conversation with Dr. Lewis.
And we, we, we will, we
So, these are, the cost would be some of these larger commercial properties, we get a lot of complaints on, and that would be that cost. So, kind of the total there is the residential demolitions, the trailer park demolitions, the commercials, and then I'll put in asbestos lead abatement allowance in there, depending if we have to spend that much to take care of that kind of material, um, will be that cost. So, here's the solutions and approaches that we've started to use. Um, we have our website, which anybody can go on and visit and get the information of what, what properties in your neighborhood have issues. Um, we also have our citizen access portal, columbusga.org/cap, where you can type in the address, everything on that same street, and it'll tell you every violation, whether it's property maintenance or code, um, special enforcement-related, um, issues. We started boarding houses back in 2016, and you can see the cost of average of boarding houses around $2,000, which is obviously a lot less than the $12,000 to tear it down. So, if we get in, in front of it, fortunately enough, that's one on Woodland Court up in Villa Village, uh, the one on, uh, 54th Street, and, uh, there was one we dealt with on Portland Avenue. So, ideally, if we get in, in, in front of it enough, somebody calls in and say, hey, you know, hadn't totally been ransacked yet, we just want to board it to protect it, um, we go ahead and move forward, at least boarding it, so it won't continue to get worse. Um, enforcement, like I said, we started coordinating with these other groups, obviously, special enforcement's in my department now, but with Public Works, business license, tax commissioner's office, fire EMS, CPD. So, there's somewhere we can hook them, say, hey, this man may own a piece of property and he's coming up for business license, I'll call Yvonne and say, hey, he owes us something on his other side and make sure we don't issue him another business license until he takes care of his property. So, we're trying to kind of find different ways to, to hold people accountable. Um, the one at the bottom there, I've been trying to work with the city attorney's office, working with them on potentially turning some of these on LLCs from being criminal violations because I have to physically issue you a citation to more of a civil proceeding. So, we just charge you for the fines as a civil issue, and then we can just have a civil process server issue it wherever you are. You don't have to be inside the city limits, I can issue it to you in, in anywhere else. So, we're looking at that, the city of Atlanta, um, did one, uh, put it in place in, uh, late 2018. So, I'm trying to call up there and kind of see what they had to do, and obviously, it'd be another cost to my budget, but if we have some of these habitual people that we need to get a hold of that are out of town and we're just not getting any response, at least we can issue them something civilly officially as opposed to just my notice letter saying that these things are non-compliance. City attorney talked about the Land Bank, which is, um, like I said, if we have people, um, one of the things about the Land Bank is they have like a side yard acquisition. So, say if somebody has a demo property that we tore down, it's right next door, um, the Land Bank would help with them to, um, proceed with purchasing that side lot. So therefore, that lot between them is not just growing up with grass, you know, somebody may have already been taking care of it, but it'll be officially a part of their parcel. So, we're working with different things like that to try to get some of those properties taken care of. Um, and then on amnesty month, um, we did it, um, back in, uh, September of last year, and unfortunately, I think if we would've scheduled a little better, we probably would've got more returns. But, um, literally in 15 days, we pulled in about $39,000 because those liens were forgiven. Um, I know Counselor Allen asked it, we have 342 properties that have demo liens of some sort on them, and those date back to about '92. So, imagine a property that, you know, we, we put a $2,000 lien on 20 years ago. That is, that is a big chunk of change to try to pay to get corrected. So, um, this year, we want to do it from May to June, and we're gonna send the letters out in April so they have time to contact banks and lenders and see if they can get that money and, and work with us to get it going forward. So.
Right, so just to be clear, you know, what we do during amnesty, amnesty is, a- a- as the director said, you, you take a property and let's say the demolition 20 years ago was $5,000, and then with interest now, you know, it's $16,000, $17,000 on that property. And so, during amnesty period, we would just waive the interest and they pay the cost that we expended to try and get that property back on the tax roll. And, and I was sharing with, I think it was the mayor or someone, uh, this one elderly person, for example, wanted to purchase a property that was overgrown and next to a church, uh, and the property was, let's say it was $3,000, but it's been, uh, it's accumulated, and, and with the interest is about $21,000. Well, if we sell the property to the elderly woman who wanted to purchase the property as a gift because, before she, before she passes away, uh, then she could've given the property to the church, then the church would then maintain the property, but we would not waive the interest. And so, amnesty period would allow, and, a person like that to go ahead and pay the lien, donate the property to someone, and hopefully, it'd go back on the tax roll. And we wouldn't have to go out and maintain it or pay someone to go maintain it and keep building up the cost. And so, uh, you know, we think we can do a better job this time with the amnesty period if council decides they want to try that again.
It's a great presentation, John, I appreciate it. Um, yeah, we've got, there are things we can do. And I'm, I'm really looking forward to seeing what you bring back. And I, and I really believe it's gonna be just the beginning of an effort to try to be a little more creative in how we dispose of property, free up some of our cash, get some of these properties earning income back for the community again, and take out from neighborhoods, I mean, we talked about it before, it's hard to expect neighborhoods to stay nice and neat and people to maintain pride when they're driving by these burned-out shelves three or four times a day.
Well, and Mayor, I think, you know, I've had a conversation with you and I, I know that we need to do something about all of these properties, but we're gonna have to do it a little bit at a time, but I, but we have got to do something about those mobile home park situations that
I would say that's top priority.
Yeah, and, and we've had that conversation, so, you know, we need to figure, figure that out.
Any other questions for Mr. Hudsonson?
Thank you.
And, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my agenda today.
Alright, uh, hang on, we've got a couple of folks. Uh, Counselor Barnes?
Uh, Mayor and counsel, and city manager, you're gonna find this interesting. I, um, was at a health advocacy meeting in Atlanta, and there was a council member from Shawnee, council member Miller. She found out I was from, um, Columbus, she praised how the city is managed and all the advancements that, obviously, she's come to council over a long period of time. She said she came in 2008, um, just as a private citizen and saw what we were doing, uh, as far as the pedestrian walks and, and the partnerships. And she went back home, got elected to city council, and she says, they're using Columbus as a blueprint. And, and she said this at a meeting, it was, people from all over. And, and it was really, it was really something. She said she really liked the way that Columbus and the council and mayors had partner, private-public partnerships, really liked the emphasis that, that we're putting on pedestrian access and bike paths, which of course brings people in, which, people spend money and there's, and adds to growth.
Yes.
So, I wanted to let you, and I will give her your contact information
Sure.
Uh, because for someone there in Atlanta to make that kind of a statement, and it, it was just awesome.
Sure.
And so, I just wanted to bring that, bring that up, I'll give you that information. It's a big pat on the back for what we, as, as we're doing and also the way the city manager is managing the city.
Sure.
There's a, um, there's a lot of things right about this community.
It's a lot of things right, and, and, and that generated a lot of conversation, but to have someone just to mention that
Yeah.
And to say that she came in 2008 on her, I think, inner city something, just as a private citizen
Okay.
Um, spurred her to run for office so that she could be part of the, the process. I think that's awesome.
Awesome.
It speaks a lot for what we, what we're doing as a city and what we're in, in the future.
Absolutely, thank you for, for mentioning that, bringing that up. Counselor House?
By the way, I'd like to thank this council for supporting the resolution for Step 3, we could pass the House
Yeah.
And it was at, at the Senate, um, yeah, it's in the Senate, and I think that will be passed, it's huge.
And thanks for your efforts behind that, too.
Oh, thank you, appreciate it.
Counselor House?
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Barnes actually made me think of something that Counselor Crabbe and I discussed last week. We spent three days in Tipton and after, you know, in that counselor training. And after some of the horror stories that we heard other people say about their councils, their city managers, and the, and the rest of the administration, we were both very happy that we are here. So, we are doing a lot of stuff right, uh, because there's certainly a lot of other people having a whole lot more trouble than us. That's all, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, uh, the deputy city manager's there because Counselor Thomas asked that we just share with the citizen again about cutting up, uh, their tree debris and the lint and so forth, and so she was gonna quickly do that.
Okay.
Okay, good afternoon. Um, just wanted to, first of all, just thank the community for their patience um, with the fact that we've had to deploy our resources, not just for this past storm, but the one previous to that in February. And so, they are working on both of those issues, and we know that we have about And so, they are working on both of those issues, and we know that we have about, you know, six weeks of, 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 of trying to get them to where, get everything cleaned up to where it needs to be, but what we ask is that citizens do please cut up their trees or limbs into four-foot sections and then place them on the right-of-way. We will not come onto private property and pick up, so make sure that those that you cut up are on the city's right-of-way and we will come in and we will clear that. We, our grab-all trucks are now back on the regular route to pick up as needed, and so that will continue on your particular scheduled days. Um, through, through April the fourth.
Yes.
Through April the fourth, fourth.
That's right.
It will be picked up, the tree for fee will be waived. And the mayor earlier, of course, you know, told us how, how you can get those waived for those on private roads. You can take it to the Granite Bluff landfill and your tree for fee will be waived. They will, at the landfill or through 311, provide you with a certificate of waiver, and all others, of course, will have to go through that process as well by calling 311.
And so, when they place it on the right-of-way, they should not put it on the power lands or too close other structures, yeah.
Mm-hmm. That's correct.
Yes, sir. We, we ran it on CCGTV.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and, and they have been doing an amazing job. They really have. So, yeah, all the neighbors are very appreciative. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, Madam Clerk?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The first item is a memorandum from Karen Smith regarding appointments to the Medical Center Hospital Authority Board of Trustees, and we have outlined these two seats under board appointments. Item number two is minutes of various boards to be received.
Got a motion, second, receive the minutes. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Next, we have board appointments. The first is the mayor's appointments, that's ready for confirmation.
Motion, second, to confirm, Ms. Lou Allen. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Passed.
Next, we have council appointments that are ready for confirmation. We have received some additional nominations, so I will first address those that are ready for confirmation. Animal Control Advisory Board, Carol Basset, Board of Zoning Appeals, Charles Smith, Building Authority, Lee LaCarre, Vincent Allen, Commission on International Relations and Cultural Liaison, Encounters, Mr. John Jackson, Personnel Review Board, Willie Butler. If we can have one motion to approve those, Mr. Mayor.
Got a motion and a second to approve that slate of appointees. Is there any of these seats that someone would like to place under the name and nomination? All right, any?
I'm going to add just one out of that.
Okay. All right. All right, for the ones following these? All of these are okay, though? All right, well, good. We've got a motion, second. We're on those first seven, I believe.
Counselor, something is to be confirmed.
Counselor Davis, we have not got to the Civic Center Advisory Board yet.
We did. Okay, that, that one's the next up. So, we'll go ahead and call the question on, on those names that were listed. All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Okay.
On the Commission on International Relations and Cultural Liaison, Encounters, Counselor Huff is withdrawing the nomination of Patricia Butler and is nominating Mary Jean Quiller, and we will bring this appointment back at the next meeting.
Okay, Counselor Huff, did you have anything else? That was it? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
For the Planning Advisory Commission, Counselor Allen is nominating Ralph King. And for Larry Derby's position, Counselor Garrett is nominating, I mean, I'm sorry, for...
Ms. Mason.
Mr. Larry Derby is being nominated to succeed Kathleen Mason. Counselor Davis, did you have a nomination for?
Nomination for Kathleen Mason.
We will bring this back for the next meeting. Counselor Barnes, did you have a nomination for one of the seats? Ms., Dr. Xavier McCaskey?
Yes, yes, sir.
Did you want to list him for the, for Mr. Edward Kenner's position?
Yes.
Okay. We will bring that back at the next meeting. Therefore, we can, the council may take a vote to nominate, I mean, to confirm, Mr. Ralph King, Counselor Allen's nomination.
Second.
Okay, motion, second, for confirmation. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? He's confirmed.
We have council district appointments. For the Civic Center Advisory Board, Counselor Davis is nominating Spencer Cantrell for Mr. Alton Russell's seat. He may be confirmed.
Move confirmation.
Moving, motioned in second to approve Mr. Cantrell. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Passes. He's confirmed.
We still have additional council seat appointments. Community Development Advisory Council, this is District Six, as well as Recreation Advisory Board. Then we have nominations that will be listed for the next meeting. Counselor Huff is nominating Richard Mahone for Mr. John Allen's seat. Counselor Allen is nominating Mr. James Houston Jr. for Mr. Sam Warren's position. Counselor Crabbe, are you going to be nominating Mr. Lloyd French or?
For, for the conference.
Yes, ma'am.
Which seat?
For which, for which seat?
Either one of us.
Okay.
If there's an open seat, he'd like to...
Yeah, there's, there's no, there are two open seats, but there, there's one name in each seat for nomination, but you can nominate another individual and then council will vote on which one will take that spot. But you'll need to designate which seat you want to place him in nomination for.
You can nominate Sam Warren's seat. And we'll vote, say, that's just the way it works.
Okay. Then Sam Warren's.
We will bring these back for confirmation and a vote tabulation for Mr. Sam Warren's And we have, Counselor Barnes has made a nomination for Mr. Kenner's seat on the Planning Advisory Commission. For the Medical Center Hospital Authority, Counselor Thomas is nominating for Robert Coon's seat.
Excuse me.
Mr. Frederick McKnight, Mary Solomon, and Tracy Sayers. For Meredith Gerald's seat, Carol Rutland, Mary Solomon, Tracy Sayers. The council may take a vote to send these nominations to the Medical Center.
All right, motion, second, to, to send these three to the, to the Medical Center Hospital Authority. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? They passed, but let me make one comment. I know that we typically try to note what senatorial district these individuals are in, and it just, I would, I would encourage, I know we get feedback from that, that organization. We need to encourage them to try to keep a, you know, some representation from the entire community on that, on that authority, so, just a, an aside.
And, Mr. Mayor, I did just want to announce the upcoming board appointments that will be listed for the next meeting, Deferred Compensation Board and Employee Benefits Committee. And that's all we have, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Who's the nominee for the back?
Yeah, it said there was a nominee for Mr. Kenner's seat. Who is that?
That would be Counselor Barnes's nomination of Dr. Xavier McCaskey, Counselor Huff.
Okay. All right. Any further business needs to come before the council today? There's a motion adjourned?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say goodbye.
Bye-bye.
We're adjourned.